Thank you very much. Welcome to the March 18th Select Board Meeting. This meeting is called to order at 6:30. And before we get started with public comment, I would like to note that Alan Torrey, the town's first town manager, passed away on March 7th of, just a couple of weeks ago. He served as Amherst Towns manager from 1954 to 1975. And just in honor of Alan Torrey, I'd like to take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Mr. Misanti, would you like to say a few words about Mr. Torrey?
Yeah, I would. A number of us had the honor of attending the funeral services for Alan Torrey on Saturday. And looking back through his years of service with the town, back in 1974, when Alan was celebrating his 20th year of service with the town as its first town manager, there was a town meeting proclamation that characterized Alan Torrey as, quote, "dedicated, thorough, impartial, knowledgeable, and professional with the highest standards of ethics." And Alan, after leaving the role of town manager and serving as treasurer at Hampshire College, returned to town service back in 1983 and served two terms on the Amherst Select Board. And Barry Del Costello, former town manager, was one of the speakers at the service and talked about Alan's service to his community and to his church, to Hampshire College, to the South Amherst community. He also talked about the many lunches he had over the years with Alan and, you know, in talking with staff and reminiscing. That was the first time I met Alan Torrey, was at a lunch with Barry Del Costello. And it was really going through a laundry list of town issues, and it was a mini-history lesson, having the opportunity to speak with Alan. And so, he was a real leader in our community, and I joined many others in mourning his passing and thanking him for his decades of service to the community.
Thank you very much. Someone who really, very literally helped make Amherst what it is today. So, thank you. Okay, public comment. How many folks do we have here for public comment? Okay, Mr. Weiss. Please introduce yourself for folks, I hope.
I'm Jerry Weiss from Precinct 8. Thank you for recognizing me. I'm glad to see you all up there. I'm reminded every time I come. I'm thankful that you're up there and not me. It's my understanding that sometime this year, Rolling Green Apartments will cease to be considered low-income housing units that they have been for, I don't know how many years. And that they make up a fairly large number of our units, and that when they go, what we call, I think it's called offline, meaning they'll become more private market rate units. When that happens, the town will go below the 10% threshold that the state requires to avoid having developers come in and be able to put up kind of what they want. They can ignore a lot of zoning laws, as long as they provide a certain number of low-income units, probably 10%, they probably have to provide at least 10%. And so, that's my understanding. And that means that developers can pretty much do what they want if they own a piece of land. And we've always avoided that because we've been above 10% for many, many years. And because of that, because of that number, above 10%, they couldn't do that. They had to actually get permission from the Select Board to do it. So, I would love if the Select Board would hold a public, make this an item, a scheduled item, in the near future. Invite a member of the Planning Department, a member of the Housing Committee, and have an open discussion so the community can hear all that's going on, what it means to the community, what are, is anything going to be done about this 10% problem? Are we, should we expect developers coming in and buying up some land and putting up large buildings? I think the community would like, I would like to know, and I'm guessing a lot of the community would like to know, what is all this going to mean, and when would it mean that? So, I'd love to see that be a scheduled item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. And next, ma'am. Please identify yourself for folks.
Hello, I'm Karen Jones. I'm a previous resident of Amherst for many years. I was a town meeting member, a member of the Parking Commission, Public Transportation and Bicycle Committee. And I'm here before you as a member of the Planning Committee for the Bike Week Celebration that will happen in May, from the Monday, the 13th to the 17th, Friday. And our request to you is to be able to reserve the use of the Main Street parking lot on Friday for our breakfast, which we've had for, I guess, 14 years now. And the Spring Street Lot on Wednesday for the rodeo, which will be available for registration by elementary school kids in conjunction with leisure services, after-school program. We do things all week, Monday through Friday, and these are the two that require use of space.
Thank you. So, that is on our agenda to deal with that tonight, so we do have a motion for that. But while you're here, is there anything else you'd like to say about the Bike Week activities? Kind of give folks a commercial?
They're open to all members of the community. We welcome veteran bicyclists, infrequent bicyclists, and newbie bicyclists. We want to support people who want to get on a bike, from all ages, you know, young to old. We're working with the Senior Center and the Health Department this year to see if we can get some elders on, in the saddle.
Nice. And where can folks learn more about the upcoming events?
There will be information posted. This is a part of an initiative that's statewide that's done with MassDOT, and that's called BayStateBikeWeek.org is where you can get information, BayStateBikeWeek.org. And then MassBikePV, all one word, dot org, gives a calendar of events in the Pioneer Valley, and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission plays a major role in helping all this happen.
Terrific.
Okay, any questions?
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else here for public comment for something that's not on the agenda? Okay, then we might as well take care of the Bike Week motions right now. Well, Ms. Jones is here, so she can leave satisfied we have done this correctly. Ms. Stein?
I move that the Select Board approve the reservation of all metered parking spaces in the Spring Street parking lot on Wednesday, May 15, 2013, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for a bike rodeo.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move that the Select Board approve the reservation of all metered parking spaces in the Main Street parking lot on Friday, May 17, 2013, from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the annual Bike Breakfast and Bike Show.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Ayden?
It turns out that I'm too old to join the rodeo, but it looks like it's a lot of fun on Wednesday. But Friday, I am allowed to participate in the events on Friday, and those are also, it's a great deal to come and not only get breakfast, but to meet your fellow bicyclers, learn their stories, and I'm hopeful that they'll be the fun contraptions to try out. There are all different kinds of bicycles that often show up there, so.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in, and we will look forward to Bike Week. All right, we still got six minutes before our first timed item, so let's see if we can take care of a couple of untimed items. We do have other parking reservations. Ms. Stein?
I move that the Select Board approve the reservation of the first eight metered parking spaces on the west side of Boltwood Avenue, originating at Spring Street, moving south toward College Street, beginning Saturday, May 4, 2013, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And the reservation of the first four metered parking spaces on the west side of Boltwood Avenue, originating at Spring Street, moving south toward College Street. And the reservation of the first four metered parking spaces on the south side of the Spring Street parking lot, beginning at the Boltwood Street entrance, from Thursday, May 2, 2013, at 8:00 a.m., through Friday, May 3, 2013, to 6:00 p.m. And again on Saturday, May 4, 2013, beginning at 2:00 p.m. through Sunday, May 5, 2013, at 6:00 p.m. for the Amherst League of Women Voters Annual Book Sale.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Ayden?
This looks an awful lot like the reservation we handled last year, and the year before that, and the year before that. I guess the season is starting for activities on the Town Common, and this is a good one, raising, as it does, funds for the League of Women Voters.
It actually is the major source of funding for the local League of Women Voters. Very important.
We have gotten this motion down pat after all of these years, so.
Yes, indeed.
Much detail was put into that. Okay, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Another one?
The liquor license?
Sure.
No, we can't do that yet, I guess.
You could do the Florence Savings Bank parking one below the Bike Week.
Okay, yes, I can do that. I move that the Select Board approve the reservation of four metered parking spaces in front of 98 North Pleasant Street and Super Bowl, on the west side of North Pleasant Street, on March 22, 2013, at a cost of $5 per meter per day for the installation of a replacement ATM. That's for Florence Bank, and maybe it should say that.
Twenty-six?
Mm-hmm.
March 26th? Is that not correct?
You read 22nd.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that, but yes, because I was distracted by the fact that the motion should say "for Florence Savings Bank" as part of the motion, I think.
Okay, Mr. Ayden, have you seconded the motion?
I have seconded it.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer.
Yes, beyond what Ms. Stein just pointed out about saying who is responsible, although it's the party that's doing it.
Could you speak into my microphone?
For Florence Savings Bank, I would just like us to reassure the public what I think is true, which is that the, once we approve this, the office will let Super Bowl and the adjacent business know about it, just so they're not horribly surprised when they show up, in case the bank people didn't think to tell them ahead of time.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Couple more minutes, so let's try some special liquor licenses.
I move that the Select Board approve a special wine and malt license for the Friends of the Jones Library Wine Tasting Fundraiser, to be held in the Jones Library on Saturday, March 23, 2013, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Bonnie Isman, President.
Actually, I think you've got an old motion sheet, because the new motion sheet has that one struck.
No, we have the new one.
That's been, um.
No, we struck the one from Eisenberg, I thought.
Well, that event has been postponed until the fall, so.
Okay.
Funny, that's not on my motion sheet.
Yeah, it just didn't make it to the update.
All right, shall I take the second one down?
Which is what, just for?
Oh, well, let's see, that's for the Eric.
Margarita testing.
No, no, no. Am I reading in the right place?
No, you're in the right place. We're on the same page.
Yeah, okay, so it should be the Eric Hall Museum, wine?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Margarita.
It was just the first.
It still says testing, even though I called and said it's tasting.
Makes it sound very scientific.
Wheels are falling off, there, folks.
I'm sorry, but we don't test the margaritas, we test them. All right, I will read this.
Duly noted on the minutes.
Okay, good. I move that the Select Board approve a special all alcohol license for the Amherst Chamber of Commerce Margarita Tasting at the Eric Hall Museum on March 27, 2013, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Joan Temkin, Marketing Director.
Tomato tobato, second.
Further discussion? Ms. Brewer?
If we could just correct Jones' last name in the minutes, that'd be helpful. Take the P out.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. All right, that's all we're going to do for now. We're going to do our 645 item, thank you very much, and we'll have those to fill in later. So, our 645 item is Statements of Interest from Mass School Building Authority. This is something we do every couple of years. This is, we need to be part of the process to get on the state's list for potentially financing new school construction or renovation. So, we have Mr. Bahanowicz and Ms. Garrick here to talk to us about the letters. We haven't done this, I can't remember if we did it last year, we don't do it every year, but the last time we did it, we said, you know what? These letters are kind of confusing, and it would be nice to have folks here to tell us what they're talking about, so. Here you are. Thank you.
We'd be happy to do that. So, I will speak to kind of the educational goals of what we're hoping to receive, if we are chosen to receive funds, from the building authority. So, we are, and we brought this motion to the Amherst Schools Committee on Tuesday, last Tuesday, and they voted to support both Statements of Interest. And this would be for Fort River Elementary School and Wildwood Elementary School. And our hope would be to renovate both of the buildings. I'll speak about the educational piece, and you can talk about the infrastructure and things that I won't know how to cover. So, in terms of the educational structure, for those of you who have been in both of those buildings, while they are, to some standard, really fine buildings, they are not really created to be conducive to educating students today. I know that there must have been a great reason to have open-air classrooms many, many years ago, but today to have in three to four classrooms in one space, where there are partial walls that go up, so the noise from four classrooms are within that space is challenging. Also, when students are walking from one part of the quad to use the bathroom, they walk through each other's classrooms. So, it's not how today, if we were going to look at how to design the interior of a school, just from the classroom perspective alone, would not be, this would not be our first choice. In addition, there are needs today that when you have specific populations of students, you want to have smaller breakout spaces where you're working with students in small groups. We have less opportunity for that type of instruction unless we're kind of walking with kids across the building. So, you lose instructional time through movement throughout the building. So, those are kind of the larger, like, the educational implications, and I know Ron can speak to many, many more in terms of safety as well as the structures.
Let me just give you a little bit too about what they call the SOI, the Statement of Interest. It's the MSBA, which is the Massachusetts School Building Association. This process is something that they did a while back ago to expedite the selection of schools that are in need of renovations, repairs, or new schools being built. Previously, what would happen is the people like ourselves would go off, we'd hire an architect, we'd spend all kinds of money, and then we would go out and say, hey, we want to build a school, will the state give us some funding? And sometimes you got on the list, and sometimes you didn't. And in the meantime, the towns actually spent lots of money under engineering and that kind of stuff. This process now, what we do is we submit to them, we're interested in moving forward, and if we move forward, will you play in the game with us? And if they then invite us into the game, then we can start moving down that road of the designs and what we're going to actually do. So, the first thing we have to do is we have to get a vote from the school committee, and then, and when it's a town building, you have to also get the Select Board, or if it's a city, the mayor, or whoever else to say that they're willing to support this. And what we're really, there isn't any real monetary commitment when we vote tonight, but what is there is you are serious that we're gonna, if we were chosen, we're really serious about moving forward, and that's kind of what we're really voting on. Along with what Maria had spoken about with the schools, there's also a couple of things that are really new that have popped up in the last few years, and that's the security of the schools. These schools, again, with this four open area, any type of entry into the school, automatically you have four classrooms that you can get into in a second. Our main office is literally 80 feet or 100 feet away from the doors. And before you even get to the main office, there's hallways that you can go down, and then there's also rooms that are just off of those main hallways. Additionally, those at school, the one thing the town has done is, has maintained the school fairly well. I have written this SOI since 2008. I submitted in '08, '09, and I think '10. In '11, I sent one for the middle school windows, and we were fortunate enough to get invited in on the windows. They reimbursed us at 60 cents on a dollar. And this year, actually, what we are asking for is we're asking for Wildwood, Fort River, and I actually wrote one for the high school, for new boilers at the high school, under their green, under their green SOI. And that only had to be voted by the Regional School Committee and then signed by Maria to submit. And so, we're submitting that as well, and I'm hoping that we're going to get that money as, in addition. So, it's a long way in front of us, but part of the process to come here tonight and get your vote that you were willing to support moving forward on this.
Thank you very much. That was an excellent explanation, and much appreciated. Questions or comments from Select Board members? Ms. Brewer?
As I always like to point out when we do this statement, one of the things that, you know, and you've explained the process super well, but for people who are looking at it online and just looking at the Statement of Interest, sometimes the categories sound kind of scary, and you should not be afraid to send your children to school. The buildings are not falling in, nothing's, you know, the furnace isn't failing, any of those things. Unfortunately, those things are happening in other parts of the state, which is why so many people are ahead of us in line. But, but we fit within these categories, it just doesn't mean that it's scary. So, I just like to reassure people.
And that is, that is true. And just as, you know, again, for the public, there's 1,800 schools in the state of Massachusetts. And of those 1,800, there's many, many people looking to go into this process. And as a matter of fact, if you went onto the Massachusetts School Building Authority's website, you can actually see where all the projects are. There's a graphic representation of where they are, and it's pretty interesting.
Thank you. Ms. Stein?
However, we, one of the repairs that's needed, that's before JCPC, is for a $400,000 boiler work for the Wildwood School. So, we're talking about some very serious expenditures that need to be made, and that's one of the categories that the MSBA looks at, is boilers and energy. And so, it'd be wonderful if we could, in fact, get some money to help with these.
Thank you. So, would that money, in fact, help, or is that, JCPC's a separate process for this?
Well, the JCPC, the $400,000 that we're asking for the JCPC is to retrofit the boilers that are existing, what we call number-two fuel oil, also known as just regular home heating oil. And we're going to retrofit those with, and they were from 1973, we're going to retrofit them with natural gas, high-efficiency boilers. I did that at Fort River, I think it's two years now, and I just did a, I was doing some numbers today, and Fort River, last year, we spent $29,000 in natural gas, whereas Wildwood, last year, we spent $108,000 in oil. So, I'm predicting that if we move forward with the $400,000, we're going to have a $60,000 or $70,000 per year payback on it. And in addition to that, we're not only getting the economies of the commodity pricing, but what we're also getting is the efficiency of going from something like the high 70s up to the 90s in efficiency. And then also, I'm big, I love energy and I love the community, but it also really helps us from the carbon footprint as well, because the natural gas is much less carbon output than the fuel oil.
That's tremendous. So, that, none of that is dependent on the MSBA funding?
No, but what I can say is, what we do with the boiler will be usable in the future. So, it's not like it's throwaway money.
Right, thank you. Ms. Stein?
Also, I'm remembering that we did roof repairs to Wildwood a long time ago, or quite a while ago, and then got reimbursed. Is that a possibility with this boiler retrofit?
No, because one of the things right now is, there's the green energy thing that I talked about at the high school.
Right.
That's, under the MSBA, if you only need one thing, you need a roof, or a boiler, or windows, one thing, they'll fund that under the green repair. If you need, like Wildwood, because of the infrastructure with the classrooms and everything else, they're going to either fund the whole project, or they're not going to fund any of it at all.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments for these folks? Anyone in the public, questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motions?
Okay, and I am to read all of this.
If you would please.
In your special way, yes.
Okay, I just want to be sure, because it is rather lengthy.
Yes, it is.
Having convened in an open meeting on March 18, 2013, the Amherst Select Board, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated 2013 for the Fort River Elementary School located at 70 Southeast Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. One, replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren where no alternative exists. Two, elimination of existing severe overcrowding. Three, prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollment. Four, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Five, short-term enrollment growth. Six, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city slash town slash regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. One more.
Okay, having convened in an open, this is going to be very boring, but having convened in an open meeting on March 18, 2013, the Amherst Select Board, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated 2013 for the Wildwood Elementary School located at 71 Strong Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. One, replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren where no alternative exists. Two, elimination of existing severe overcrowding. Three, prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollments. Four, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Four, short-term enrollment growth. Five, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city slash town slash regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Ayden?
Clearly, this is a result of the Full Employment for Select Boards Act, that we have to read all of this.
That's right.
But also, I guess the form is important, to be clear about what it is we're doing, even though that is pretty rote. I mean, clearly, we're only going to pick one, or two, or three of those seven items, so. so.
All right. So that's exactly why Ms. Brewer, in particular, had requested that you folks come in and explain this, because otherwise, we're sitting here going, I don't know what we're talking about. Are the, are the buildings falling down, you know, is there extreme overcrowding, or whatever? So that's very helpful, so much appreciated. Ms. Stein?
Okay, so I'm really old, but I remember when that school was new, Wildwood, and my kids went to England after their first year there and bragged about the carpeting on the floor, and this wonderful space that they had, and, you know, it's, it's hard for, and I remember when they put up the totem pole, which was done by the students.
Still there.
And it's hard to believe that it's really so different. But I've seen it since, so I know that it desperately needs this work. So I hope you get the money.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you very much for coming in. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Can I say, I don't know why people put carpets in elementary schools, in particular in the cafeterias. It was so low.
It was supposed to make it quiet. No, it's supposed to make it quiet, so you could handle all that open space.
So thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in. Okay, 655 item. This is a liquor license change. This is a change of manager for Thai Corner. And we had established quite a while ago that when, when the liquor license change does not require a public hearing, we don't make anybody come in for it. We've talked many times about how the liquor licenses are so incredibly specific that any change to them needs to come before the select board, but only changes at a certain level require an actual public hearing on that. So a change of manager does not require a public hearing, but I want to make sure nobody's here to speak to that at all. Okay. So, Ms. Stein, would you like to make that motion?
Sure. Now, there's two motions under, okay, just to make sure. But one's in yellow, and I didn't know if that was.
That's part of the revised motion sheet, so that's, that's a good thing.
I move that the select board approve a change of manager from Chet Setiampak to Kanan Bunag for Thai Corner Incorporated, doing business as Thai Corner Restaurant, ABCC license number 02400090-11.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Brewer?
I just wanted to also mention quickly, to follow up what you said, the, the select board town manager office does such a fabulous job on these things for us. I mean, anybody who looks at the stuff online, there was an additional piece of paper tonight. It's just tons of paperwork from ABCC. We look at it, we're like, whatever. I mean, it's just so rote. But the police chief does look at it, that's why the change of manager has to be looked at. So there are, it, it may seem like we're not doing much, because we're not, but we have to do that part, but the office behind us and the police chief behind us are doing all their parts to make sure this all works appropriately. So we aren't just killing trees for no reason, just so you know.
That's a good point. We are, we are the end of the line in this. There's plenty of process before it gets to us. Mr. Hayden?
And we appreciate it.
Indeed. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
I move that the select board approve the new officers slash directors as presented in the petition for transfer of ownership dated March 18th, 2013, for Thai Corner Incorporated, doing business as Thai Corner Restaurant, ABCC license number 02400090-11.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Timing is good. All right, so our next item then is the FY14 budget discussion on the 2013 paving and roadwork plan. And we have Ms. Rezeki from Department of Public Works here to talk to us about this. For folks following along at home, per usual, we have all this information in our web packets. And welcome, please introduce yourself for folks at home.
Oh, thank you. Well, yes, I'm Ms. Rezeki, and I will applaud you for pronouncing it right, because most people don't. So that's impressive. But I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Public Works, so since Guilford is not available tonight, I get to present this to you. So, do you want to?
Yeah, just very briefly, before Amy walks you through, there is a worksheet in your packet that's posted online that has a, has a, our current list of construction activity by Public Works for 2013 that she can run through in detail. And Steve Braun is also here, from Chair of the Public Works Committee. They've been working very closely with staff, assisting with the development of prioritized recommendations, and we've had a number of discussions. It's been very, very helpful. So Amy will run through the list, and it continues progress, but, and, which is good, but the, the tough thing that people throughout town and throughout the state know is that the list of projects that need to be done, streets that need to be paved, sidewalks, et cetera, is very, very long. In fact, in Amherst, we have about a $16 million backlog. There's roughly a million and a half dollars in available funding for the coming year. So we have a long ways to go, and it just underscores that as we consider this and the sequencing of, of projects, it's very, very important that the state of Massachusetts and the legislature provide cities and towns with the resources we need to maintain and rehabilitate our roads. There is a, a transportation finance bill that's been filed in the legislature. The House is actively considering it presently. We are very hopeful there will be action by the House of Representatives during the month of April. That would, could potentially, if the governor's proposal is adopted, allow our Chapter 90 Road Grant to be increased by 50%. It would go from about $800,000 a year to about $1.2 million a year, you know? So that's, and with a 10-year commitment with, with increases over that time for inflation, that would allow us to address the majority of that list. And my intention would be to, if we really did get a 10-year commitment from the legislature at that amount, would be to bond a large portion of that Chapter 90 money, so we could, we could do the work over the next two to three construction seasons and see the benefit of those improvements at less cost than waiting a full 10 years. But that's a debate that's very active now in the legislature. They're talking about how to, the, the easy part is arriving at consensus for the needs, the hard part is getting agreement on a, a tax source to pay for it. A broad-based tax is critical. There's been discussions about some combination of sales and income tax, income tax, and that's, I think it's important that we, we've let the legislators know, and Transportation Secretary Davy and the governor that we're supporting his efforts. And April really is a critical time to bring this thing to the finish line, so we can begin to make real meaningful progress against our entire list. So with that all.
Thank you. So tell us the details.
Okay. Well, you guys have your list in front of you, so I guess I, I don't know how much detail you guys want specifically. We have, we have it kind of broken down in terms of funding sources for these. So under the bond funding, we're looking at Strong Street, Northeast Street to East Pleasant Street. There's probably going to be a little bit of sidewalk work there as well. Then we have Triangle Street, also under that same bond issue, from Main Street to Old North Pleasant Street. And again, there'll, there'll be a little bit of sidewalk, sidewalk work with that. Both of those are going to be reclaimed for Chapter 90 work. We have Lincoln Ave., which, as you guys probably know, we've been doing the sewer work, so that'll be base coat only this year, and then hopefully top coat next year. And then we have West Street to be done, and that's just going to be a small section of West Street. And I know if you look at the, the price tag on that, it looks like a lot of price for a small amount of length. That involves some regrading. Right now, the, there's a short section there that, there's not good sight, especially if you're pulling in and out of the red barn. So this is the section right in front of the red barn, so there's going to be some lowering of the road to improve the, the site on that. There's a little bit of water work there as well, because we'll be lowering the road, so the water main will have to be moved as well. And then Dana Street, putting in the speed humps on Dana Street is the last, last item under Chapter 90 funding. Under our sewer fund, we're going to be looking at repaving the section of Cherry Lane that we replaced the sewer main in last year. So, and that's going to be getting the top course. It got the base course last year. And then a couple of other, I guess miscellaneous projects. We're going to be doing the middle school tennis courts. We're going to be doing the site prep, the reclaiming, and the regrading, and then the school is going to be taking care of the fencing and the painting and the other associated work. And then we've got, we have Cottage Street, which we will be doing the top court, the top course on. Depending on what version of this you got, I don't know if you got Cottage Street from Triangle Street to, we have number 36 Triangle Street. It should be the entire length of that, but we are, we are at this point trying to figure out what exactly we're going to do. The town engineer is working on a focus group with some residents there to try and figure out, so that the design isn't quite done on that, but it is our intention to try to do the whole road, to come with a consensus with the, the residents there. So, so those are the, the actual paving projects. And then the second part of the sheet there is the other projects that we're going to have that are going to have some effect on the roadways, but don't necessarily involve paving this year. I don't know if you want me to run through those or not?
Sure. Why don't you, why don't you do just sort of a brief overview of those also?
Brief overview, okay.
Yeah, that's great.
So for water projects this year, we have Centennial, the, the next phase, last year the phase was to put the sewer main down, Amherst Road and Pelham Road. This year, the phase two of that is to replace the pump station, which is in front of the Pelham Police Fire Station right there. The pump station there is, it's in rough shape, so we're going to be replacing that as kind of phase two for the Centennial work. And then we're replacing a water main on Hillcrest Ave. due to water quality issues there. And then on Old Town Road and Moreland Street, we're replacing some water main there for, to incre, increase the water main capacity there, and also to, I guess, to loop a couple of dead ends there, so we don't have dead ends, which are typical water quality issues. So, so that's the work that we're doing. The Hillcrest, Old Town, and Moreland Street, those three projects, we're going to be doing in-house. Our crews will be doing that. And then the pump station work, we do have a contractor for that. Sewer projects, Larkspur Wood, Wildflower, Lady Slipper, Tea Berry Lane, Wood, Woodlot Road. Those are all part of the sewer expansion project. We are putting together a bid for that to go out, to get a contractor to do that work. So those are the sewer projects. And then water and sewer. It's Harkness Road, which, again, that's part of our sewer expansion project, that's, you know, this year's portion of that. And then Pine Street, I guess, pending town, town meeting approval of the bonds for that. We will be doing both water and sewer replacement on Pine Street. So.
Thank you very much.
I'll take any questions.
Okay. So I'm sure select board will have plenty of questions, then we'll get to the Chair of the Public Works Committee, if you'd like to comment, and I know there's a bunch of folks from the public would like to comment also. So starting with questions and comments from select board on any of these items, what is and isn't on the list? Mr. Hayden? And, sorry?
There, there, well, I actually brought the, the list of projects that I was given at the last Public Works Committee meeting. So there's a lot of stuff that's not on the list, and I just wanted to be appreciative of the committee for their aid in prioritizing, you know, sort of getting to the, what, what is perceived, what are the top problems. I, it's, it was a very long conversation and very thoughtful, and I'm glad for it, because it does give us, get, get us to this point where we can say, yeah, this is, this is a good list.
Thank you. Ms. Brewer?
That's excellent. And I'm sorry if you already mentioned this, you did such a great overview, but maybe I missed it. When you're talking, and it's in my neighborhood, so that's why I have to ask, under the water section?
Yep.
Old, Old Town and Moreland, and of course, I want to know for Hillcrest anyway, too. When we do that work, then, because of the staging of the, of the previous projects, so we'll do the water main work this year, then obviously that will tear up the road.
Yes.
So then, does the road get done the same year, or does it get done the following year? Just so that I can tell people when they yell at me.
Right. Have them call us when they can yell at us. But typically, what we'll do is when we finish that work, we will at least patch it. We do try and get a base course down that year if we can, but you never get perfect compaction when you do it, so you want to wait at least a year.
That's what I thought was the.
Until you do the top course, just so that.
Right.
It saves a lot in, in pavement quality if we can wait that year.
Excellent.
And that's why you'll see some of, you know, Cherry Lane and Cottage Street are both places where we did the work last year and got the base course. Now we'll do the top course, now that it's settled.
Exactly. And of course, these are much less traveled than those are, and so, but just to let people know, know it's not going to stay that way.
Exactly.
It will be fixed the following year. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from select board? Ms. Hayden?
There's just another, it's, it's kind of a subtle one. You mentioned the looping of mains. As I understand that, that's a, a small additional cost. Those are not long pieces that connect the ends of those together, so it loops through. But it is really good practice, and I appreciate that, that we're actually putting it into practice here. It, it helps a lot with the water quality.
Other questions or comments from select board? What can you tell us about Pine Street? So what's the, what's the general status of Pine Street, which has to be the most complained about road in town?
Yes. We certainly get our share of complaints as well. So I, I, as far as I know, we've just been waiting to get, fun, you know, for the last several years, we've been hoping to get, you know, state grants or something to be able to do that work. But there was, as with a lot of these ones, you want to fix what's under the road before you actually do the road. I believe we applied for funding again this year and did not get it. So we're, that's why, at least through the Water and Sewer Fund, we're going to move forward with replacing the infrastructure, because we can't continue to wait for outside funding for that. The engineers are working, because we understand that there's a lot of questions about if we do traffic improvements at certain intersections. So our engineers are busy looking at different options, and I'm sure they'll be presenting that to you guys as they come up with different selections. So that's still very much in the, in the process. So.
So.
I believe there's plans on the Public Works website for different options that we're looking at there, so.
Thank you. So the, the water and sewer lines will be replaced, which means tearing up the road pretty significantly anyway. So once that's done, no matter what you put over, it's going to be an improvement over currently, right?
Yes.
So it, I mean, is that true? Does it, does it really kind of rip up the whole road surface, or is it just going to be?
It's, it's going to rip it up pretty good, but we will be.
We notice?
Yeah. You may or may not notice, and at least, you know, a year from now, it's going to be a great road, and it's going to be great. The infrastructure underneath, you know, the water main will be the right size. The sewer main will be the right size to be able to handle everything that we put down it from Atkins Treatment. That's part of what's overwhelming that sewer main right now anyway, so.
And is this, this whole list, not just the sewer part, but all of it, is this more or less in the order it's expected to go, or how does that work?
Not necessarily in the order. We, in terms of the work that we do, the guys are going to do it in order of when they can get materials and what makes sense. In terms of the paving, just a little note on timeline, we are working on the bid to put the bid out. Hopefully by middle of April, we'll have the bids in from the contractors, so they should be able to start pretty quickly after that. And then we're going to try and, if we can sneak in stuff like Triangle Street before graduation, that would be great. Otherwise, we'll wait till the kids are out of school. Like, those are the sort of things that help us prioritize when these actually happen, is when other activities are going on that we have to work around.
And is the, is that whole bidding process, is that, is that on track for what you expected? Like, we talked about bonding in the fall in order to get an early start on this year's paving process, instead of having to wait until after spring town meetings. That was, that's.
I think overall it is, and we're expecting competitive bids to come in, in mid-April.
And people will be wondering about pothole filling in these various places in the meantime? Are you, you're not going to ignore the roads that are on the list, or anything like that, right?
No. Right now, we're a little disadvantaged. We have a big stack of potholes, and our reclaimers getting some repairs. We have a big stack of potholes, and our reclaimers getting some repairs over the last week. So, if people are a little frustrated with pothole filling right now, it's, we'll be back on track in a couple of days, but that is a concern, we know.
Other questions or comments from Select Board? One other question, so Dana Street Speed Humps, this is something that we've heard a lot from members of that, those Dana and Blue Hills neighborhoods about, and also from Public Works Committee in their original recommendation to us. The concern is, since the roads are, are parallel and sort of, you know, people might use one versus the other, if we only do the speed humps on one street, what does that mean? So, what's the rationale behind that plan?
The rationale behind doing Dana Street and not Blue Hills is just that the, the pavement on Blue Hills is, it's in rough enough shape that the speed humps, it, it would be hard to actually secure them to the road, essentially. You, you basically don't want to put speed humps on until you have a, a good enough surface to be able to put them over. So, until Blue Hills can make it onto the priority list of roads to be paved, we wouldn't necessarily recommend that it be done. We do also, another hitch in that whole thing, is that there are a couple of water quality issues on Blue Hills that we're in the process of having studied, but we don't quite know the answer. And again, you don't want to repave a road until you make sure what's underneath it is taken care of. So, you know, it's on our radar, but not necessarily for this year.
Okay. All right. I'm sure there will be more comment about that. Other questions or comments from Select Board? All right. So, Mr. Braun, would you like to talk to us about Public Works Committee stuff?
Would you really just answer questions? I don't have anything that I need to bring to the slide board?
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, then, public folks, want to comment on anything they've heard tonight? Raise your hand if you-
Anything about the Blue Hills and the Dana issue?
Sure. Yeah. So, you need to come forward then, and if you just move aside, so he might speak there. And please identify yourself for folks.
For allowing us to address this one, appreciate your, your comments very much. It, it is-
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry. My name is Reese Davis, and I live on, on Blue Hills Road.
Thank you.
When we first came to the PWC meeting, we very clearly came together as, as a package, Dana and Blue Hills together, because we, we realized the repercussions of one street getting it and the other street not getting it was the repercussions were pretty bad. So, the reasoning you gave is, I absolutely, engineering and said it obviously is an issue. What we would like to possibly be allowed to sort of suggest again is-
Hold on, just one second, I'm sorry. We've got a technical issue. Okay, yeah. It's going to be a little bit louder. Thank you.
Do you want me to start again?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay. So, the main concern is that if we are split, splitting between the two, because we came very clearly with the two together. As you know, with drivers, they'll very quickly find out that one street is slow, one street is fast. The issue we have at the moment is Blue Hills is a, is a deceptively quiet street. There are no sidewalks. People walk down the middle of the street quite happily, kids play on the street, they learn to ride their bikes and all that stuff. Where the scene changes rapidly is when you have the opportunistic driver who sees the back of on Route Nine, I'm going to cut across, and you can see them down the end of the road, and they barrel down, straight down fifty, forty, fifty, sixty, miles an hour, not unusual. As parents, I mean, over the years, we've resorted to shouting after cars, waving them slower, we even park cars strategically down the street to try and slow them, and that works. But that shouldn't really be our job. We, we shouldn't have to do that. So, the, add to that the number of kids that are on our street. We have twenty-seven kids on our street. We have under sixteen, twenty-three of those are under twelve, thirteen of those are under eight. So, the numbers, the cocktail is potentially pretty bad if drivers find out that, okay, Dana's no good, we're going to go down Blue Hills. And we're very fearsome of what could happen. And I think, with all respect to the issues that are obviously, this obviously is an issue, how do you do it? We're just worried. And we, I don't think we'd have come together as Blue Hills and Dana together if, if we thought there would have been a one or the other issue. I don't thi- I think we, we were quite clear, and we've even had let, John Willoughby, who's been leading the petition on Dana, I think he wrote a letter to you today, his continued support, you know, Dana wanting to see this as a package still, if this is at all possible. I'm not quite sure how you'd want to do it, but it is a, a major concern if, if, if we, if we get this up.
Thank you. So, is, so is this something that the Public Works folks, Public Works Committee, Public Works staff can continue to work with the neighbors on and decide whether this is the right time to do Dana or not? Like, I don't think the Select Board should just decide, like, that would be fairly random and arbitrary of us. But, you know, can, because those are very real concerns if you, if you do one versus the other, but maybe the, maybe the residents haven't thought about the fact that that could mean, you know, it, it'd be a long time until you do Blue Hills or whatever. So, there are, there are a lot of different ways to think about it, to, to kind of work out, so, so it, it's not too late in the process for you to kind of maybe put the brakes on that, or however to continue the conversation? So, everybody's nodding, so that's good. So, Mr. McSanty?
Yeah, we'll work with staff and, and with the neighbors, and, you know, the, the issue with Blue Hills, to me, is a matter of when, not if, but like a lot of the road work and traffic calming work, the when is dependent upon having the funds to, to attack that list in a, in a major way. So, I'm inclined not to proceed, you know, to make a small, the dollars on Dana for the speed humps are relatively small, but the whole point is to make the entire neighborhood, meaning both streets, safer. So, if that, in an unintended way, could in the short term create, you know, safety issues on an adjoining street, then I'm, I'm persuaded not to proceed on Dana yet. If we do get to be funded by the Commonwealth through the Transportation Finance Bill, that will allow us to, to really attack this list in a major way, and we'd be in a position to complete the water, water line feasibility work, and then work in the speed humps and paving, so that could be done in a coordinated way. So, I'm very much persuaded by the, by what you're saying and by Mr. Willoughby's summary that was provided to the board today.
Thank you. Ms. Brewer?
So, along those lines, then, would you then also speak with other aspect of staff to talk about enforcement on both Blue Hills, just in general, because obviously they're experiencing this issue? But also, as the Lincoln work starts up? Because as the Lincoln work starts up, then obviously it puts even more pressure on the nice, smooth Dana, the not-so-smooth Blue Hills, and so there will be consequences anyway, what, no matter what we do, because of doing the work on Lincoln.
All right. Mr. Davies, anything else you'd like to add?
No, it's, it's in your hands, so Ms. Braun, appreciate that.
Thank you very much for coming in and offering your comment. Other folks like to comment on the, the paving and construction plan, please come forward. And please identify yourself at the mic.
Hello, I'm David Schmidt from, excuse me, Blue Hills Road. Thank you for recognizing me and listening. I'd like to concur with what Mr. Davies said. His concerns, I think, are very valid. I would like to see if I can persuade you to a slightly different conclusion based on some of the same facts. I think we all see the parallels between Dana and how work on one impacts the other. But this is, if you look at the proposed construction list under C-90, where the Dana Street work is listed at $7,300 approximately, and, and I'd like to put that number in perspective a minute and, and lead you along with my thinking. That's relatively small cost, about one thirtieth of the tennis court item, a little bit further down. Also, just to give you an idea of the current state of things, my car was parked in broad daylight on Blue Hills Road, and broad daylight raining, but midday, and a car smashed into it and did $9,000 of damage to my car. Thank God it wasn't a person, because as Mr. Davies mentioned, there are no sidewalks, so our street's filled with people. And in the snow, snowy season, they don't even have the option of walking across the grass if they're children, right? The snowplow pushes up all the berms, so they're in the street for good. So, $9,000 of damage, the cost of that one crash exceeds the cost of the speed humps, assuming that it'd be the same as Dana Street. So, since we can't really be sure whether it's one, two, three years out, that we would get the sewer work done and the repaving, all those necessary preliminaries to the speed hump, I'd like to see if I can make the point that it's worth spending the extra $7,300 now, even though we're cognizant of the fact that the road would be torn up at some point in the future, and, and probably to the tune of a few hundred thousand dollars of work put into it to redo the pipes and everything, that the current state of affairs warrants, I think, more immediate action.
Thank you very much. So, so the, the engineering folks will continue to, to work on the, the options there and how the finances work out. I'm, I would imagine, though certainly, I don't know, I'm no expert on this, that it would cost more than the $7,300 to do it, because you would need to actually prepare the road surface to make them adhere, so you don't have speed bumps that are either just falling apart or being pushed down the street, or something like that. But one of the things I've learned in this job is nothing is as easy as you think it is. So, that's why we'll, we'll continue to have these folks work out the equations on that and consider the pros and cons. I think that all of your points have been well-heard and are certainly very appreciated, and, and we're just trying to find what the best solution is for the short term and the long term. So, so please stay engaged with this and, as, as they continue to work through those solutions. Thank you very much. Other folks like to comment on paving, please come forward. Please identify yourself.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Cowman. I live at 42 Blue Hills Road. We're here in Mass tonight. I'll be brief. I hear that the speed humps can't go in really until the road is vi- viably paved and so forth. As a community, Blue Hills Road has informally decided that it's possible for us to financially, if the town would allow it, to put in temporary speed bumps under the current conditions. So, we would, because we have over twenty children who live on this one little stretch of road, we are willing to explore that option, if, if you are likewise.
Thank you very much. That's very, that's very solution-oriented of you, and much appreciated. So, so again, that will be part of the conversation, staff, and everybody will talk about the viability of that option as well. So, that's tremendous. Thank you. Other questions or comments, first from the public? Okay, Ms. Brewer?
Completely understanding what you stated earlier, I want to reassure the public that we will continue to encourage staff to look at this. I mean, the Select Board won't say, you know, oh, we're going to do this one and not this one, and pick and choose off the list. But when we say that, we don't just mean, yeah, thanks, but, you know, whatever. We actually will talk about this, because we have had conversations in the past, oh, you know, ten, fifteen years, where we said we absolutely never, ever, ever want to put a crosswalk by the Jones Library. What a horrible idea. And whether or not it's a horrible idea, it's something we ended up doing, despite it seeming like we couldn't possibly do it. So, you know, this is, I appreciate that everybody's being really solution-oriented and trying to take into account, you know, one affecting the other, can there be some private investment here on a very temporary basis, understanding it's not a long-term solution. So, we really appreciate people coming together with that, and people will keep talking to each other and talking to you and engaging with you, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Other questions or comments about any of this plan? All right. So, next steps are that this, some of this stuff still needs approval from town meeting. This is part of the FY14 budget, and whereas others is already funded, is that correct?
Yeah, the Pine Street water sewer needs town meeting authorization. The other, the other items are previously authorized by the million-dollar bond issue, or we're awaiting Chapter 90 authorizations later this spring.
Thank you very much. So, it really just, it reinforces the necessity of the governor's transportation funding plan, because if we had more money, we could do much more roadwork. Okay. Anything else you'd like to let us know? Mr. Seki? No, Mr. Braun? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in tonight. Thanks, everyone, for offering the public comment, and we will, we will keep ourselves informed about how the Blue Hills and Dana situation proceeds. So, thank you very much. All right. Next up. North Amherst Local Historic District Study Committee Status Update. Has my name, but actually, I think it's going to be Mr. Wald. I hope he'll speak to this. So, we had some questions last time about what was, what was the status of this? This was something that residents had asked us to establish a while ago. I believe it was October, that Select Board took a vote to, to establish a study committee for North Amherst, and then we had some questions as to what exactly is the situation there. So, Mr. Wald?
Okay. Just very briefly, for purposes of background for the viewing audience, local historic districts are a special category under state law. They're found around the country, and they provide protection such that the locale has the power to stop or otherwise modify harmful demolitions or changes to prop- to historic properties. After, it's a long process. It takes at least usually twelve to eighteen months to create one of these things. Has a high bar, like a zoning ordinance, requires the two-thirds approval of town meeting or city council. Amherst established the first one in the Dickinson Historic District downtown at town meeting last year, and there has been interest on the part of the public now in creating others, first of all, from North Amherst. So, the, the thing is, every time you do this, you have to start the process over again. The town has to appoint a, a study committee that determines the merits of doing this, the boundaries, the rationale, documents, resources, and so forth, and then goes through a long process of consultation with the public, submission to the state, and bringing back eventually, in hopes to town meeting or city council, as the case may be. The Dickinson District is really just getting underway right now. The first meeting of that committee, that is, the committee that would administer the district and make any judgments, took place on Wednesday. Town staff and the planning department didn't want to rush ahead with a new one until the first one was established. So, that brings us to the next step. Under state law, as the Mass Historical Commission explains, when an additional district is to be created, the existing historic district commission or commissions, acting jointly, that is, if there are already several, is responsible for conducting the study, drafting the preliminary report, that goes to the state and the public, and the public hearing. The existing historic district commission or commissions may, however, recommend that a separate study committee be appointed for the purpose. So, that's where we are right now. So, under the state law, in a sense, the, I guess, as you say, the existing committee has the right of first refusal. It could do it. It seems, though, looking at what people actually say, that this may be a burden they don't want or need to take on right now. It's a fairly onerous thing. You've got a new committee just getting started, and so there are lots of reasons for thinking that it might be sensible to turn that task over to a new committee for reasons of efficiency, and also because we want to bring in new people, including residents of North Amherst, so they have a voice in this thing, too. So, as far as I can tell where we are now, that's the way we're inclining. That said, you would face a different question down the road if you have multiple districts, and then who administers the actual process and makes decisions? So, I think if I can summarize what came out of the meeting, there's probably an inclination to create a separate study committee for North Amherst, but with an eye in the future to having a single committee that would actually make the judgments, because then you wouldn't be training people. In other words, one committee can make the decision for multiple districts, because then you've got the expertise in one place. You wouldn't be training people from scratch and starting over again. So, that's pretty much where we are, I think, if that answers the question.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brewer?
Thank you very much, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Wald. And because it was, it was very clear to the members of the Select Board that we weren't paying attention to that part of the law. When we developed the charge for the North Amherst District Study Committee, we were working under the assumption that it was going to be just like the previous process in terms of the study, in terms of going out, the staff needing to solicit people from the Architect Board, from the real estate, and, and doing, you know, the exact same process all over again, as opposed to how you very carefully explained, and seems pretty- as opposed to how you've very carefully explained and seems pretty obvious in hindsight that the existing group would, would serve that function going forward. I thought it was made clear, you know, and so there was this disconnect because we didn't understand that at the time that we wrote the charge because we wouldn't have written the charge the way we had, had we understood that. So this being new to us. So I appreciate that they just had the local, the Dickinson District, despite people thinking it's been around forever now, really just had their first meeting last week and they haven't actually formally yet voted to give up that right of first refusal, I take it. But that would be, when they would choose to do so, if, I would hope they would choose to do so based on our previous understanding and based on what you just described in terms of their workload as well, then we would be able to solicit those parties like we did the first time around. And when I say that, that's staff doing that, those various places nominate people. Then we also have at-large members, et cetera, and then that process would really get going. That does not mean that people can't be turning in their citizen activity forms right now. So that would be fabulous. But because there are at-large members of the public to be involved as well. But at this point, it sounds like in terms of next steps for staff to do, it's now at the point, or any of us to do, for the Dickinson group to go ahead and meet again, to choose, to say, no, it's fine with us if this time you go ahead and do it this other way. And then in future, there'll be two of us and then we can all, two of us bodies, assuming that that one actually happens as well, and then they could work together for future.
Mr. Wald?
Yeah, I think that, again, I was unfortunately unable to attend the meeting because of my work schedule, but that's my sense of what came out of it after confering with Mr. Malloy, our associate planner. And I should say too, I mean, I didn't think particularly about this other, or the default option when we crafted the charge, but that's in part because the thinking of town staff all along was, was more logical to have two committees. But probably we should have made more explicit that choice or that fork in the road there, just to keep things clear.
Thank you. So then our next step is essentially to wait for a recommendation request from the current committee to see if we need to establish and then recruit for, as Ms. Brewer said, a new one. Okay. Anyone from the public want to comment on this? Ms. Keller, please come forward and identify yourself at the mic.
Janet Keller, Precinct One, North Amherst. And as you know, we're very excited about the district. We've been in conversations with staff, with members of the Dickinson Local Historic District, and with folks from North Amherst who might have expertise and interest in serving. And there is quite a bit of interest and we will heed Ms. Brewer's injunction to get going on those activity forms. So I guess that's our little update.
Thank you very much.
And very much appreciate the assistance of, of Mr. Wald in working on this. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Ms. Brewer, as far as the CAFs go, we don't have such a committee. How do you submit?
Oh, it's, it's right there on the list, the North Amherst.
Oh, really?
Study Committee is on the list. We are soliciting people. Some people thought they'd turn them in, et cetera, and so, but it's there. And, you know, if by some strange quirk we wouldn't choose to do it this way, then we'd have their information on file for future historic type appointments. So please don't let it stop you that we have these other steps to go through.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this topic? All right, moving right along. Food truck regulation status update. So at the last meeting, I gave you the details, kind of the overview. Actually, that was two meetings ago and then we kind of checked in on it last meeting and said, you know, any comments? Where are you on this? I had hoped to have either the regs for now or the first April meeting, depending how things worked out. I don't have them for you now. They would have been in the packet. Has not been a lot of progress on this, I got to admit. I will say, though, we did get good comment from staff. We circulated them to staff. I've gotten good comment from Board of Health, Public Works and the Town Collector's Office. There are still some questions from select board that I need to get answered and get more clarity on how the parking part of it would work. But, and we have not, in the meantime, had any other public comment or business community comment. So the goal is to have them for the April eighth meeting, which is looking pretty good at this point. So, any questions or comments about that? Anyone from the public want to comment on the food truck regulation situation? No? All right. Moving right along. So next up, we have rental regulations and permitting report, Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods update. We have Mr. Zomack, Chair of that fine committee here with us tonight. In the packets, we have an overview of the regulation situation, kind of like a translation, if you will, as well as a set of draft regulations. Those draft regulations are from the committee's last meeting. So they do not reflect the revisions that were made at that meeting. A more recent version is now available on the website, on, on the Safe and Healthy page. So folks can check that out if they're interested. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Zomack.
Great. Thank you very much for having me. I'm joined here tonight by Janet Keller, a member of the working group, and thank you for being with us as well, Janet. And I will try to be very brief because I think you've received some very complete information in your packet. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about the efforts of the working group. First, I'd like to publicly express my thanks and deep appreciation to the members of the working group. This group has been working extremely hard and diligently since November of two thousand and twelve to respond to the charge of the town manager, to develop, at the time, what we were calling a set of rental regulations. We, we know now this is a, really should be called a bylaw. And as Ms. O'Keefe indicated, you have in your packet the version from last week. We, the working group is meeting again tomorrow and we have a slightly revised version that the group will be considering tomorrow. Again, referencing Ms. O'Keefe's summary, I think it is a very thorough and well put together illustration of where we've come and where we are today. We've had excellent input from the public. We've had numerous, numerous public meetings in this, in this room, in this forum, from three to five in the afternoon, and we've held two public forums that were extremely well attended. We've had dozens and dozens of comments throughout the process. And I'm excited to now bring it to you and to other boards and committees in the lead-up to town meeting. This week, we'll be here before you tonight. Tomorrow night, we'll be at the ZBA administrative meeting and I'll be joined by other members of the working group. On Wednesday night, we will discuss it with the planning board. And again, all of this in the lead-up to town meeting. I think the document and the process has come a long way since November two thousand and twelve. We have a document that is responsive to Mr. Muzanti's charge. I will say that part of that charge is, was that we addressed the four unrelated, some of the lingering questions about four unrelated and that bylaw. And the group early on in the process decided to table that. They felt as though that was just too much and we didn't have time to do that before spring town meeting. So I think what you have before you is a, is a proposed bylaw, a draft bylaw that is, that meets the, the expressed purposes, one through twelve, that Ms. O'Keefe was so nice to outline. And happy to take questions if you wanted to add anything, Janet.
I'd like to echo the comments about the work that the committee did and the staff. It was a very large effort. I think perhaps wise to tackle the bylaw and, and not take any side trips. We certainly felt like we had our hands full. And I would like to commend the efforts of all involved. And it is my hope that in this final meeting that we will retain some of the features that certainly brought, as you may know, I'm sitting on this board as a representative of the Coalition of Amherst Neighborhoods. And from the outset, we had and still continue to have a very, very strong interest in the behavior aspects of this. And I know the landlords have felt that's a tough one for them and I certainly can appreciate that and understand the state law that they're operating within and has a number of constraints. That said, I do think it's terribly important that we retain as many protections and recognize that landlords, and many of them are demonstrating this every day, have a great efficacy when they set out clear expectations. And then when those expectations aren't met, act promptly to bring behavioral issues that have spread throughout town to the great detriment of the town. And it's our great hope that we'll remain strong through this, this final session that we're having tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Zomack, Mr. Muzanti?
No, I also want to, ongoing thanks to the working group because the set of recommendations that you've essentially endorsed last week and there'll be some really, what I think are relatively minor edits, clarifications for tomorrow. The other focus of tomorrow's session that I've asked staff to explore with the work group is, okay, we have a draft set of recommendations that have been endorsed. I want, I would like to have some accompanying recommendations about an implementation plan, some sort of, you know, overview of a schedule and then recommendations on, on staffing and fees to, to implement this successfully. So I know that'll be a focus, focus of tomorrow's meeting. And I'm, I think we are on track, I think, I'm on track to be able to offer recommendations with this input from the working group in time for your consideration for the annual town meeting warrant that you're scheduled to sign on April eighth.
Thank you. So because not everybody has read these documents, I'd like to give a little bit more of a detailed kind of summary of where we are and what we tried to do. So going from the overview document that's in the packet, and I'm not going to read through this, but just because some folks are watching this for the first time to really get a sense of things. We got together under the charge that Mr. Muzanti presented to us to try and figure out how do we deal with the, the growing spread of problem issues associated with rental properties in town? Those, those issues are, they're behavior related. They are aesthetics related. They are related to lack of awareness by tenants and landlords about what the town bylaws are regarding any number of things. It's related to some tenants, in fact, being taken advantage of by landlords. The tenants really not understanding what their rights are. So we wanted to really put together something that would benefit all stakeholders. And the stakeholders are the tenants, the owners and managers, neighbors, the public at large, and certainly our code enforcement officials. We wanted to be able to establish baseline compliance with certain life safety and sanitary codes. We originally had gone down the road expecting to do that through periodic inspections. The inspection process proved to be too complicated and there are really so many laws that are associated with these things, you just can't even believe it. So a lot of the things we originally thought we wanted to do turned out to be not, not practical. So baseline compliance will now be, be a self-certification. It will be criteria determined by staff about building and safety code and folks will now attest to that. Additionally, to establish baseline awareness of town bylaws and health regulations for property exteriors. So just like we've got interior safety issues to protect tenants, there are also exterior issues. The ones that will probably come to bear again tonight involve things like clearing sidewalks after snow and ice. That's something that typically renters often don't even know about. And there are a number of things like that. To establish parking plans appropriate to each property, it has been clear to the working group since the beginning and it's clear to all of us in Amherst that parking issues have been a really significant problem. And so that was a key thing for us to address, and I'll get into that in a little bit more detail, how we did that, in a minute. To establish clarity on occupancy limits, we talked about needing to address the four unrelated persons, but choosing to essentially table that. So what we've done is reaffirm, that is the law of the land. And so we want to have absolute clarity, again, on behalf of the landlords and the tenants that four unrelated is, is what will be enforced. We want to establish contact people to handle non-compliance. It's part of kind of the registration of all properties. Who owns these places? Who do you follow up with as a code enforcement official or as a neighbor, if you have a concern? To establish penalties for non-compliance, obviously. To establish baseline awareness of town bylaws about noise, alcohol and nuisance behaviors. This has been a really critical part of this and making sure, again, that people are clear about what the expectations are and what one could get in trouble for. We want to codify these regulations appropriately to make sure that they take effect immediately. And that was why we went the course of a general bylaw. And to encourage providing timely access to properties for code enforcement officers to investigate complaints. That speaks to the access question I talked about earlier. You can't just, you can't just mandate access. It very much depends on the tenant allowing access. So, so we want to encourage the fact that it's really to the, to the tenant's benefit and to everyone's benefit if code enforcement officials can get in as soon as possible to a property to investigate a complaint. And that we want to ultimately have a comprehensive list of rental properties. And that is something that we don't have now and clearly need. So those were, those were kind of the things that we started off as, as looking to address with the rental regulations. So kind of what they've ended up being is registration, self-certification about health and safety, as I mentioned, a parking plan. Those are the things one, a property manager or landlord needs to fill out to get a permit. You've got to register, fill out all your information as, as would be specified. You've got to self-certify on the health and safety issues as well as providing the, the information about town bylaws, et cetera. All that is detailed on the, the second page of the overview document. And a parking plan. You'd need to submit a parking plan for approval to the building enforcement officer who will sign off on your existing parking situation, which would be only pavement. There will not be parking on, on grass or dirt. Or if you want to expand parking, then you would have to go via the zoning bylaw. So that, that's what, that's what a rental permit equals right now. Those are the steps you need to take. You need to register, self-certify about health and safety and get an approved parking plan. There are fines for violating any elements of this and these are primarily fines that are already associated with the zoning bylaw because really we don't have any new laws here. The parking thing is, is one new law and the fact that, that the rental properties need to be registered. But by and large, we have not created new bylaws. We have put together, really compiled and clarified the bylaws as they exist with just those couple of new elements, as I mentioned. There will be a fine for failing to register. We have not come up with what that fine would be yet. That's part of tomorrow's meeting. There would also be some kind of fee for registering and we haven't come up with that either. That will be part of tomorrow's meeting. And the, the key thing is there is the potential for permit suspension in egregious circumstances, truly egregious, of not cooperating with the code enforcement officials and, and not complying with the law. Compliance is really what, what is being sought here. So there is, there is the, the potential for suspension if someone is truly just not, not cooperating with the town and really creating a danger. As to the question of behavior, we talked about, we talked around and we didn't quite get clarity on the behavior question at last week's meeting, whether suspension of a permit could potentially be tied to tenant behavior. And we're getting a lot of advice from town council here. The goal is to have the, have what we put forth be as practical and defensible as possible. So originally, we talked about it being about truly egregious acts by the landlord. So, and when we spoke about, town council spoke about the fact that perhaps the language still allows for, hasn't closed the door on the potential to include behavior there. There was a lot of comment at the meeting, not in favor of attaching tenant behavior to it. But where there's ambiguity there, we will need to clear that up tomorrow. And again, looking for it to be something that, that town council believes would be enforceable by us. As I said, this is really kind of a combination and clarification of the existing regulations. And it, I, just speaking for myself, I think that the main thing it does is clarify. And it, I, just speaking for myself, I think that the main thing it does is clarify. It makes, it makes everyone's expectations very clear on behalf of the town, to the landlords, what their responsibilities are to the tenants. It will make very clear to the tenants what their responsibilities are as well as what their protections are and it will make clear to the neighbors. One thing that I should have mentioned is that all of this information would ultimately be available online. So you can look, if you're the neighbor of a rental property, you can say, oh, huh, I wonder where they're allowed to park. Look, this is what their approved parking plan is. That's funny, they're parking all over their lawn or whatever. So, so the public will know. You'll also know who is the owner of that property? Who would you contact if you had an issue and if you wanted to deal with the owner directly as opposed to a code enforcement official, which of course you should always do anyway? So, so it would be, it's just about being absolutely transparent and accessible and clear with all of this information. And I think just putting all of the information in one place, establishing those clear expectations is going to really kind of lift all properties. Common complaints that we have heard so far is that there were not any tenants on the working group. That is true. We did, Mr. Musanti did try to recruit tenants for this specifically from UMass students and for a variety of reasons, that was not successful. And that's unfortunate. And of course, the fact that this happened over, we were having our whole meeting while inter-session happened in the meantime was not most conducive to student participation. But there you go. At the same time, I believe that what we have come up with is not onerous on tenants at all. It creates parking limitations and it has the people, so that is certainly something that would impact the tenants. The potential for registration fees being passed on to them, that has been identified to us as a concern. We haven't even established what those fees are and so if it's a modest fee, that doesn't personally strike me as very onerous, especially in return for the clarity of expectations and protections that they'll also be able to enjoy. They are worried about what a suspended permit would mean to them as tenants. The regulations specify that a suspension wouldn't go into effect until after the end of the lease or if the lease were, were, what's the word, when you vacate a lease or whatever, but if, if the landlord had to end the lease with the tenant for some reason, that, it would happen after that. So I can understand folks would feel like that might destabilize them. At the same time, we're talking about permit suspension for such egregious acts that I don't, I don't know why tenants would especially want to be living in a property where the place was unsafe and the landlord was incredibly uncompliant and uncooperative because this really is for their protection as well. So, so I didn't consider that to be a big problem. So, so that's, that's been one complaint we've had, we've heard about no tenants on the working group. So I just wanted to talk about how, how the lack of tenants impacts the outcome and, and so my point is I don't think it's, I don't think it's too bad. Another complaint is that this is too onerous for landlords and really I think that that's an exaggeration. As I told you, this is filling out a couple of forms. The, the phrase that we've been using a lot in our meetings is that these permits should be easy to get and hard to lose. This is really about trying to get compliance, it's about trying to educate, it's about trying to kind of bring everybody to the same level, but it's not some big gotcha thing, nor is it some, you know, crazy bureaucracy or whatever. We, we haven't established what staff might be needed to deal with this. The, the idea that this is too onerous or too bureaucratic, I think just doesn't really hold water because really we're looking at just a couple of very simple things that we're asking of landlords. Some folks have said that they're concerned they could lose their livelihood as landlords. If your, if your permit could be suspended per property, per, per unit, if you had non-compliance issues, they're concerned about loss of livelihood. Again, I think that's a huge exaggeration. We're talking about really the most egregious, anybody who is putting forth a good faith effort to comply, to work with the building commissioner to try and get to the point of solving problems would not be any, in any fear of, of having their permit suspended. Some folks have said that, that it would put their ability to get financing on properties in jeopardy. And I think that that's really an exaggeration also. First of all, we have examples of such permitting systems in other parts of the country and that hasn't proven to be a problem. Additionally, I think that by showing that the town has high standards for the properties and, and really kind of a, a controlled and reasonable set of expectations, that actually boosts the protection of the investment of the banks, I would think. So I think that that would be an outweighing factor, but that's just speculation on my part. And the other big concern that we hear from folks is that this is not going to solve every problem of behavior by students or by egregious acts by landlords. And that is absolutely true. It's true. It's not going to solve every problem. This is going to go a, a long way to bringing us further down the field than we are now. We're hoping that it will make significant improvement, as I said, just through the clarity of expectations, really kind of just being crystal clear with folks, what, what it is that the town is looking for and what the law is that we're expecting everybody to comply with. As I said, we're trying to, we're trying to make this go just as far as we can in a robust and legally practical and defensible manner. There, you know, if you couldn't wave your magic wand and create regulations, you'd create different regulations, but that's not the world we live in. We live in a, in a world of, of practicalities and laws and, and so that's what we have had to work with. It's really about trying to get everybody on the same page and I think that it really is going to do that. And it has been, as Ms. Keller and Mr. Zomack said, just tremendous, tremendous sharing of information and perspectives, concerns, ideas through a diverse group. So I think that, that, that's a pretty good summary for folks who haven't read any of the documents of where we are now. And if anyone has questions for these folks or myself, please, Ms. Burr.
So are you going to record that for town meeting members? Because it's, it really is incredibly helpful. I mean, in addition to the document you already gave us, which was kind of a shorthand version of that, to know how we got there from here and some, and those very clear concerns that people brought to the process, I think are incredibly important because people will read this and they'll, they'll ask those questions in their heads and knowing that, yep, you did talk about that. Yep, you talked about this other thing too, I think would be incredibly valuable. So think about how you want to do your podcast.
My podcast, right. So there's going to be, there's going to need to be a lot of information to town meeting for sure and so folks are working on that. Mr. Zomack, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, just a quick comment. So absolutely, we did just record that, so it's wonderful.
Use that.
A couple of other things that the staff are working on for the working group. One has been requested, just a, a simple FAQ. So how does this work? What does it do? What does it not do? And, and we may well go over this draft. I have a draft in front of me tomorrow. One of our members, Phil Jackson, Mr. Jackson, very much likes different charts and graphs and, and he's put together a couple of flow charts for us, so those are all available. And all of this information, we, we neglected to say, for those watching at home, interested in this and the lead up to town meeting, is on the town website under the living section under safe and healthy neighborhoods. All of the documents we've used, all of the comments we've gotten, all of the draft documents we've been working with and from are all there in chronological order so the group can see where we came from back in November of 12 to where we are as of tomorrow. And I think it's a, a great, if you've got even 20 minutes to just jump around a little bit on that site, you can see the, as, as Ms. O'Keefe represented, a very robust process went into this. And I think our document, which is now, what, about seven, eight pages long, came from a place of somewhere in the order of 25 plus. So we've, we've condensed, we've refined, we've edited, we've taken out a lot of things that just were not important to this and gotten to it, gotten a document that covers all the bases without, as you stated, overreaching or creating a bureaucracy that none of us are looking for, so.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Anyone before Ms. Burr?
Before Alyssa gets her 14 questions in, that'd be great. I wanted to be clear and, because I think it's true in looking at the enforcement procedures section here, as you stated, you want the permit to be easy to get, you fill out the forms, you go through the routine, it should be very straightforward, hard to lose. And so people could be, landlords could be fined for doing all the kinds of problems they already have, not picking up the garbage and, you know, not dealing with, you know, a water heater that's broken or whatever. They could still be fined for all those things and pay their fines and go about their business and do that and not lose their permit because they're still a landlord. They just have some issues they need to work through. And so I think that's important for people to recognize too, as they're going, as, as they're reading this, to remind themselves that all those things, even though you say it over and over again, like the, you know, referencing all the different bylaws we already have, all those things can still happen. And so when you talk about revoking a permit, it isn't because they have a messy dumpster right now. You don't yank their permit for that, you make them pay a fine for that. And then, you know, maybe some huge laundry list becomes a real problem at some point. But in the meantime, people are constantly working with these folks, is the idea, right?
Exactly. And there is the list of the, what the enforcement procedure would be and it very much starts with, you know, conversations with the building commissioner. I mean, they are looking for compliance and, and as I said, kind of a good faith effort towards compliance. You need to, you need to respond to the code enforcement officer, you need to be part of a plan to address how you're going to solve these problems. You need to take steps to do so within certain timeframes. You need to pay the fines that would accrue to you if you don't do that. Suspension is so far down the line, that's when, that's, I called it in the, in the meeting, the nuclear option. You know, when you sometimes, someone can just be so intractable, so impossible to deal with that they're just not, they are not looking for compliance, they are not looking to cooperate, that at a certain point you have to say, you know what? This is, this is not appropriate. We need, we need something beyond fining. We're going to take away your ability, we're going to suspend your ability to, to rent this, this property following the expiration of the lease. And I should note, and I didn't mention this before, that suspension, should it ever happen, and, and we hope that just the threat of it, the clarity of expectations and the threat of it serve enough as a, to encourage compliance and to deter anything terrible. If a permit were suspended, it would be appealable to a rental appeals board, I think it's called, that would be appointed by the select board. So, so even that is not kind of a, you know, the end of the line. There is due process at every, at every step.
Right. And, and associated with that, I, because I perceive that at least the occasional problem has to do with landlords saying, well, I told the tenants they were going to have to do that and tenants said, I ain't doing that. So it's still the landlord's problem and they will work through with our code enforcement people, which we now luckily have, people that are more available to work with people to do those things. Because the bottom line is they can't just both say they're not responsible. And this is another, and, and I think this structure helps with that, even though that's currently true as well. I think putting this into a bigger structure will help reinforce that. And then the only other question I had that was of significance because you probably already dealt with it in your more recent revision, under definitions, under dwelling unit, although I'm very familiar with the delightful pros of our zoning bylaw, I have to figure there's a cut and paste area, error in dwelling unit because it says, used or intended for use by one family, comma, as defined by the town zoning bylaw or household for living, blah, 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 blah. There, there's some, it's either a household or it's a family, it's not both. There's a little confusion in there that I'm sure you all know what it means, but it just needs to be fixed because it doesn't make any sense at all, it's written right now.
Let us take a look at that between now and tomorrow.
I'm sure you're just trying to pick up the zoning bylaw piece of it. I get that, but.
If I could just pick up on something you mentioned earlier and, and just to expand on that a little bit, the code official, and really we're talking about, it could be a, a number of different code officials, really it could be the building commissioner, it could be our health director or her staff, it could be our fire chief or her, or his designee. And so, yes, I mean, our, our standard way of, of dealing with these situations now is and always has been to work with the landlord or the property manager or the owner, in many cases, the tenants, if they're willing, and to, to deal with a situation. So this, as was mentioned early, really brings it all together in a transparent, easy to understand process and place. And under section 12 and 13, I was just rereading it again for the underth time or so, under enforcement, I think it's very well spelled out, under one through eight on page eight. And then under, you know, that, that entire process and, and Ms. O'Keefe referenced, the, the possibility for an appeal and, and the hope that if this gets passed, there will be the establishment of an appeals body. And then under 13, really under 13B1 and 2, that clearly outlines those most egregious situations, which we think and what has been reported to us from other communities that have similar bylaws. There was one reference that they've had actually much, much stricter rental regulations in their community for something on the order of 25 years and they've really only had one suspension in 25 years. So under section 13B1 and 2, that really outlines those, those cases and those situations that might cause a permit to be suspended. And of course, nowhere in the document do we, the word revocation is not in the document anywhere. So I think, I think it's very clear and again, we look for your input and guidance here in the lead up to town meeting.
Thank you.
I'll just note one other thing, on that same page Ms. Burr was referencing with the definitions, which is page two of the document that's in our packet, which is the last week's version of the regs. We did make a significant change last time, taking out the exemption for owner occupied rentals. So this will now cover all rentals, including those people who are renting rooms in their house, which are completely equal under the law. It's not going to cover hotels, motels, residential facilities authorized and operated under state and federal, blah, 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 those would be exempt. But, but there would not be an exemption for owner occupied. That was a legacy of when we had been talking about the periodic inspections and so that seemed like too much of a burden to put on somebody who's actually living in the home also. So to try and, again, trying to address all the concerns that people were bringing to us at every stage. So we said, okay, you know, that's a, that would be a, a good place to, to yield, once we took the periodic inspections out of it and it's just the self-certification. It was brought to our attention that really we didn't need to exempt that anymore. And in fact, it's to the tenants in particular and the landlord's benefits that we don't because these self-registration, self-certification forms make very clear what the expectations are. So again, you wouldn't want to have somebody losing out on the opportunity to have the clarity of expectations. Ms. Stein?
I just, for me, it's a little bit confusing. On page five, section C and D, I understand that, well, under C, it says that owner won't be in violation if a tenant refuses access, but then the very next section says that a tenant is supposed to allow access. So I don't, I'm having a little trouble reconciling those two sections. I don't know if other people will, but I understand.
You're under section?
Okay, I'm on page five and it's one annual owner self-expection and checklist and it's sections C and D. Because C exempts the owner if the tenant won't give access, but then the next section says the tenant is supposed to give access, except if it's limited by the constitution. That's my reading of it anyway. Now maybe I'm missing something.
I might be able to help.
Yeah, I'm looking at two different versions here, but, so I'll turn it over to Ms. O'Keefe in a second, but, so we spent a lot of time talking about whether we could require the tenant or the landlord to require access and, and force the, the tenant or landlord to, to permit us access. And so I think this was an effort to compromise in that direction, to basically say, if there is a situation that we need to get into the building, would the tenant voluntarily allow us access? And this is what happens now. And if the, if the tenant did not and the owner or landlord or property manager tried repeatedly and was unsuccessful and could show us that they did try, then that would essentially not be held against them.
Sure. But the tenant, according to section D, is supposed to give access, is my reading.
Correct. So that's lease language that, that we're looking to have, but at the same time, even though you can make them sign a lease that says, yes, I will give access, you can't actually compel them. There's, and tenants have incredible rights in the state, so you can't.
Under state law, yeah.
So that's where the constitution comes in.
Right. Right. So, so again, as, as Mr. Zomack mentioned, it would be a question of whether or not that would be held against the landlord. And so it would not be if the tenant will not allow access. But encouraging the lease language is another way to sort of plant the seeds with and, and remind the tenant that really granting access is, is a responsibility that you have, but it is not something that can be compelled under law. Other questions or comments?
Oh, goodness. So this is a little, little thing. But at the bottom of our page three, registration and permitting, A, application process and requirements, there's a section in red about, except as may otherwise be permitted by the code official, a rental permit application shall identify the total number of rental units on the property. Why would we not, I'm, I'm missing, like, where did that come from? Why would we not want to know how many rental units were on the property? Like, what were we trying to make easier by throwing that in there? I get the streamlining part. You talk about streamlining in another section, you know, like you don't have to fill out a separate form for a bazillion different units. But I'm confused by what that means.
I have no idea.
Okay. Let's take that out.
Look, we're going to have to talk to Rob Mora or Julie Fetterman on that one.
It might also be a town council issue. So we're trying to, we're trying to make it as, as streamlined as possible. But then, town council will say things that you need to make sure you specify to sort of indicate the, you know, whatever. Again, with the, the legislative intent and the due process. So that may or may not be part of it, or it might just be some random sentence that ended up in there. Who knows? So this is not a perfect document. Like, there, we're.
Oh, no. I'm not complaining. I'm just, in terms of trying to understand how it fits in. Like, why would we not want to know that? That does seem like something we'd want to know, unless there's some weird legal reason.
I, I think there's, we were pretty purposeful where we put these in. So I'm sure there's a, a town council answer to that. But we'll, we'll research it before three o'clock tomorrow.
It might have been part of, when we were trying to clarify that, for example, if you own an apartment complex, you don't need to fill out a registration certification form for all 250 units in your complex. You can fill it out for, for, for one and say it covers 250 units. Or you would say, we, we might be breaking it down to, for the, especially for the self-inspection checklist, to say, okay, I'm, I'm attesting to this being true for units one through 50. And I expect to be able to attest to units 51 through 75 next year, or something like that. But, so it's, it's talking about which ones it's specifying.
In fact, it jogged my memory. I think that, that's exactly right. We, a couple of versions ago, decided that, presented to the working group, and, and they accepted this concept of, that there would be one permit per parcel, essentially. If, if, if I own one unit, or I own 12, on, and, and each are on one piece of property, I submit one application for that, or the one with 12. And in some situations, say in my 12-unit development, I'm renovating units eight through 12 right now. So in that situation, that language allows me to submit an application to the, to the town for one through seven, and then basically say, eight, nine, and 10, 11, 12 are not ready now, or need renovation, or it gives the code official some flexibility there. Because the, the property manager, owner, may not be in a position to submit it. There may be renovations, or whatever is happening in those units that they're not ready for. So there can be a staggered application, if you will, for that.
There are all kinds of ways that, once we went to per, a per parcel concept, we didn't want the landlord to say, I can't fill this out because this, this doesn't apply to all my parcels. This was, there are various ways you might want to, or need to kind of exempt, or sort of put aside some of the parcels as it not quite applying to for reasons like Mr. Zomack mentioned, or that I mentioned. So it's, that's what it's for. Ms. Brewer?
I would just ask that you really strongly consider getting rid of that sentence. Because you talk about that, you know, apartments one through five in, in this other form. And by saying this here, it implies that there will be situations under which we will not know how many rental units are on a parcel. And there would be no reason for us not to know that. They might not be active rentals. But I mean, just in terms of our information gathering, this just looks like a way of someone pressuring a code official to say, I don't have to tell you how many are on there, which I know is not your intent. So I would just be cautious.
There's a way, yeah, to clarify that without removing it. Because I think we need some, we need some safety valve there to make sure. Because as, as you said, that's exactly the response we got when somebody said, oh, I have 48 units, or I have 400 units on one parcel as part of one complex, but I'm only able to because I'm changing over 100 of them. We don't want that to be an impediment to that owner or that property manager to submit. And say, this is a, this is an achievable process.
We just still want to know that there are 500 units there.
So if, if I could encourage us not to edit the document, because we'll lose our minds.
Exactly. Just, you know, footnote it or something is what I'm asking.
But if you do find issues, then send them to Mr. Zomack. Because, because we want the edits. We just don't want to edit them here. So, so that would really be terrific. Because any, any input that we get about how to make it clearer, or whatever, is very valuable. So, so thank you. But we just don't need to talk about it here. Ms. Stein?
Without adding any, without editing, the only thing I would say is, you might be able to put an additional sentence in that clarifies the circumstance where that might be the case. And then people would get it.
We will look at that between now and 3:00 PM tomorrow.
Sounds good.
If we ever let you leave, maybe we'll be able to.
And I'll also note that, so this is describing, and I didn't want to have to do this, but alas, I lost that battle with town council. I wanted, I was hoping it could be like the self, the self-registration form and certification checklist and the parking plan, and then the regulations, just talk about what the penalties are for not going along with it. But town council actually said, you need to describe the registration and the self-checklist also. But the self-checklist and, or registration, whichever form it is, says, A, that no incomplete forms will be accepted. So if, if you've left blank the number of units, well, that's not, that's not a complete form. And the form will say exactly what we want it to say. So, you know, you're, you're filling out the form. This is, this is an imprecise way of describing what those forms are. Other questions or comments? Mr. Zomack or Ms. Keller, anything else you'd like to tell us about?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in tonight. All right. 8:30. Where are we? Town managers' report. Mr. Musanti.
Okay. I'm going to spend a, quite a bit of time reviewing what, what's come to be known as pre-St. Patrick's Day celebrations. And I also want to talk about our spring season ahead, and what we're, what we're working on to keep the community safe in the spring. Pre-St. Patrick's Day, it's not unique to Amherst, but it is a growing phenomenon in college communities, where there's a celebration prior to St. Patrick's Day, primarily involving young people. And there's issues of alcohol abuse, et cetera. And so we're several years into this phenomenon. Town took several steps, working cooperatively with downtown bar owners, Amherst police, and others, to put into place procedure on, on Saturday, March 9th, that we think, in the end, in the downtown area, created minimal issues. It was relatively calm. We had pre-ticketing of, of, of some of the bars to keep patrons at the occupancy limits, and prevent the long lines outside that lead to other issues, disorderly conduct outside, or drinking in public, et cetera. So we think those worked, based on reports from police and, and fire, and, and talking with, with many. Having said that, there is a growing phenomenon of, of pre-St. Patrick's Day celebrations at locations across town, typically in, in rentals. The largest issue occurred off-campus at Townhouse Apartments in North Amherst. During the midday and into the afternoon on, on Saturday, March 9th, we think there was a crowd in excess of 2,000 student-aged persons who were outside, basically having an outdoor party on the quadrangle area. There was excessive alcohol, fights, bottle-throwing, including some thrown at police officers. Decision was made late in the afternoon, with public safety leadership to disperse the crowd. We had upwards of 20 police officers on scene. Many members of the Amherst Police Department, upwards of a dozen. We had a large number of Massachusetts State Police, community action team personnel responded. And we did have some backup support from the UMass Police Department. That was in the late afternoon. The crowd was dispersed. There were six men, all UMass students, who were arrested at the scene. Of the six arrested, two were identified as throwing bottles at police officers who were attempting to disperse them. All of the, all of those arrested have been reported to the UMass Dean of Students' Office for internal disciplinary action through the UMass Student Code of Conduct process. Fire and ambulance, chief reports steady calls for service that day, particularly between the periods of noon to 6:00. And then again, quite steadily, from roughly 9:00 at night, all the way to 5:00 AM the following morning. Over the course of the weekend, there were 21 total arrests, the majority of which were, were alcohol-related. I think it just, the events of that day, while there's been a lot of progress made on many fronts, by the town, by the university, by the greater community, this was a not-so-gentle reminder that these situations place unacceptable demands on the town's public safety personnel. And our resources, again, were stretched to the limit, and that's unacceptable. Moving forward, very aggressively on a number of fronts, and I'll focus on police and fire primarily in next steps. First, on the police side, at my request, and in response to the, all the dialogue we had, particularly during up to the fall town meeting about the nuisance house bylaw and potential revisions to it, the chief has developed a schedule of response costs to be assessed against those who become subject to the nuisance house bylaw, and then in very severe circumstances, in terms of the number of violations at a particular property, having those costs assessed onto landlords as well. So that will be a schedule that is in place as we head into the spring season. And I hope we don't have to invoke it, but we will have that tool in place for us. We have worked out an arrangement for mutual patrols with the UMass Police Department in and around the Fearing Street, Phillips Street, Nutting Ave areas, particularly on weekend nights, Fridays and Saturdays, into the late evening, early morning hours, anywhere from four to six officers. And their focus, in addition to having higher visibility as a deterrent for illegal behavior, will be to really enforce quality of life issues related underage alcohol possession, and really trying to prevent some of these large parties from getting started and out of hand. So it's really a prevention tool. That will also be supplemented with our, our latest receipt of a state grant from the State Department of Public Safety, a $10,000 grant for alcohol enforcement. We've received that grant for the past several years. That will also be looking at open container bylaw, compliance and things like that. I have asked the University of Mass for additional help, specifically looking for police assistance from the UMass PD related to patrolling in the North Amherst area, in and around Meadow Street Townhouse area in particular. It's really to prevent, try to prevent some of these large gatherings, unruly gatherings, from occurring, and provide that assistance in that needy neighborhood as well. We were als, we are also going to be getting assistance from the state police for weekends at the end of April, latter half of April. And they'll, they'll be helping us out as they have in prior years. On the fire and ambulance side, I have authorized the fire chief to implement increased staffing, really for the weekends between now and, and the university commencement weekend, which is May, weekend of May 10th, particularly on the weekend, weekend evenings. We have also been working with the Mullins Center management, and they've been very cooperative in working with us on increasing detail EMS crews for events where it's believed that a need for such services might, might be there. And so there's, for example, another, another event happening, I believe on April 13th. And we'll have a, a larger number of EMS personnel hired by the Mullins Center to provide services at that event if needed, and really act as a triage, if you will, as needed. Next, I've been working for some time now, and I'm insisting upon action for this spring. Some additional assistance from the university related to helping us staff our ambulance crews, so that services can be provided to all of those in need all over town, particularly during these warm, warm weather weekends in the fall and spring. Specifically, I'm asked, I've asked for two detail crew ambulances to be funded by the university for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights in the late evening, early morning hours, beginning at the end of March for weekends through commencement weekend. I've also asked the university to expand university health services hours on a, really for some of these high, when the demand is highest, I want them, urging them to use their own resources to help us meet the needs of, of students and others in the community to provide services. So that's a discussion that's very much in progress. And I'm pushing very hard, very hard for that. The university is also working collaboratively with our fire department and fire chief, looking at the student EMS force, and how, ways we can have greater collaboration with the Amherst Fire Department, where there's an opportunity for students to help students and work, work closely with Amherst Fire in, in the process. So I think there's some very promising work that has begun in that effort. And we're expecting to hear more in the week ahead. And I'm going to do my best to get all of these remaining things in place for the spring. And I'll be able to re- And I'll be able to report back to you ASAP with how that's going.
Thank you very much. Those are, the, the public safety implications of all of this have been just so starkly demonstrated in recent weeks. So that, that you have got a, a good plan in place on the police side, especially that you've got strong requests made to the university for both policing and ambulance support is very important, and I think that the community is really going to appreciate that. I was listening to my scanner on the Saturday, March 9th, when I wasn't downtown, seeing how great downtown was working, but unfortunately, the wheels were falling off everywhere else. It, it was absolutely alarming to listen to the scanner and to be hearing all of these calls for, you know, taking all of these drunk kids to the hospital. And, you know, and there were just so many of them, and then you hear, you know, somebody having a seizure, an adult having a seizure, or an elderly person with heart issues. And, I mean, I'm sitting there, like, on the edge of my seat going, how are they gonna get to them? How are they gonna get to them? Well, they did. I mean, it was incredible. And they had, they had fire trucks responding, because obviously, all of our fire folks are also EMTs. So they would have a fire truck show up until the ambulance could get there. I mean, it, it was really extraordinary, the work that they did, but that shouldn't have to happen. The, the meeting that I was at at Campus and Community Coalition last week, I was saying, you know, this wasn't, the, the weekend didn't go badly because we didn't have enough ambulances. The weekend went badly because there was this outrageous behavior happening that was taxing us beyond all, all reasonable limits. So, so your plan sounds great. I hope that the university embraces that and, and responds appropriately. So thank you. Questions or comments from Mr. Musanti?
Well, I just wanna say, I think it's really important that UMass steps up to the plate. I think the idea of them having their health service open and providing additional ambulance crews, I think it's terrible that our own citizens have to wait for an ambulance because they're busy taking drunken students to Cooley Dick. So I, I think the goal that you, the goals you have laid out for getting the university to take responsibility are really important, and I'm glad to hear them.
Other question, Mr. Wald?
No, Ms. Brewer.
Ms. Brewer has spoken many times.
Planning times. Go ahead.
I was just adjusting the microphone.
You didn't have to point it out.
Well, I seem to notice a change in the conversation here. I think these measures are great. As Ms. Stein said, they were asking the university to do certain things that should simply be logical, since it's their population to a large extent, though not exclusively that's been involved here. But I got the sense in some of the press reports that the university was blaming us for this thing.
So, you know, we work very collaboratively with the university
I always tell people.
on trying to solve these problems, and, and that's the absolute truth. And, you know, sometimes we're going to disagree on what the better course of action would be. As, so the Campus and Community Coalition meeting last week was, was, it was a very important meeting, very important conversations were held. We, the, the university, so, I mean, it's just my opinion that there is a, there is a culture problem that they face that they're not taking enough steps to address. And, and they're taking many steps, and I applaud all of those steps. There, there could not have, be a bigger change in the university's attitude toward, towards discipline and follow-through and making those things happen very quickly. It really, it's been a, kind of a sea change there. At the same time, there is this larger issue of, of people perceiving UMass to be Zoomass, like in the bad old days, and I really think that needs to be confronted head-on. And we don't necessarily agree on that. They, they were feeling that the bar event was more of a cause of what happened at Townhouse. As Captain Pronovos pointed out at the meeting, you know, they, it was just an excuse. There are all kinds of things that happen, you know. The Puffers Pond situation was not based on any kind of a bar event. That was a terrible situation last year. We have had other circumstances at Townhouse. You know, the Super Bowl, I mean, at a certain point, you just, you can't always be looking to, to blame the trigger. You have to be addressing what, what is the behavior that is, and what are the expectations for? What is reasonable? What is, you know, is this a, is this a rite of passage for college students? And, and it absolutely can't be, and that message has to come really loud and clear in, in word indeed from the university. And I think that they're, they've made a ton of progress with that, and they still have a lot of work to do, just like we have a lot of work to do with, with all of the different ways that we are addressing these issues. So those kinds of meetings are really important to say, okay, yes, we're, we're doing a bunch of things. We're, we're better off for them than if we hadn't been doing them. But wow, we've still got big issues, and, and we need to acknowledge them and, and talk about them and try and solve them together. And, and that's absolutely what's happening. I will point out that the, that the article last week that Mr. Wald is referring to, I think specifically, that covers about the first third of that meeting. You know, the rest of the meeting, and we'll talk about that more, is, is all about the other things that, that we're doing together. But to, to be able to kind of express joint frustration about how these things go, which is really just a sign of that frustration. I mean, we are all working so hard at this in so many different ways. But at the end of the day, we still have big challenges ahead of us. But, but we are working well to trying to solve them together this time.
I, I agree with that, and that it's very hard to change the culture. And I think it's wonderful how hard the community campus coalition works. And I'm glad that there's good partnership feelings then. But the main thing is that the university has to protect us, our citizens, and they have to make a contribution to that so that we don't have to have you on the edge of your seat because we have town citizens who are having heart attacks or seizures, and our ambulances are tied up. They have to help us because it's their culture that's causing this for the town.
Thank you. Ms. Brewer? Because I talk so much. I meant that in a good way.
So, just kind of random, again, partly showing, to try and really make it clear to the public, all the things that have been said tonight, that we are, we are hearing you. You know, that we are hearing all the different things that the community is saying about how this sort of thing has been playing out over time, and what happened in the seventies, and what happened in the eighties, and what's happening now, and the culture changes, and the Facebook, and the Twitter, and all the social media, and how all this plays into everything. I, I really appreciate the idea of talking on all the levels that you've talked about. And in particular, a couple of high points for me are talking to university health services. Again, because, you know, frankly, I hadn't thought about the fact that we can have a hundred ambulances come in here from all over the world, take everybody to Cooley. What's Cooley gonna do with them? Cooley's just a little hospital. They really are not, I mean, as much as they're great, I mean, they're not really as, as a patient's child pointed out to me the other day, you know, she's in there with her mother with her heart problem, and there's kids running up and down the halls in their underwear. And, you know, it just makes Cooley's life harder, which makes everybody's life harder. So if we can keep some of them, just like we triage at the Mullen Center, I think that, that model makes so much sense. So that would be awesome. I wanted to mention again how much I appreciate, I know it's been a struggle over, you know, just a little bit of time, I've been in town talking about how to really effectively utilize the partnership between UMass Police and Amherst Police. They're both great, incredibly well-trained, certified police forces. I mean, they're the best of the best, and they're the same size, too. In fact, sometimes UMass is bigger than ours. So it's not that there aren't people that could work together to work on this. And so I'm really, really glad to hear that we may be continuing to improve that partnership of how might we most effectively utilize that, because I know that's something that's been kind of a sticking point for a lot of residents over the years. I do just have to say, when I saw the letter, the letter to the editor from a UMass administrator, that, you know, to criticize the over twenty-one bar ticketed entry as being an issue, I thought was just flat-out ludicrous. And I am ashamed that a UMass administrator did that because, really, we have way bigger problems than that in terms of saying, if you have a four paragraph letter, you don't say, well, that over twenty-one bar thing is what promoted this. That's not what the problem is. It's true, there are lots of crazy symbols out there in the world. When the UMass article came out on the Gazette, I forgot to bring the front page with me, right underneath, it didn't say riot, right underneath, it said, look at these lovely older people having a shot of whiskey to celebrate their Irish heritage. And I showed that to people, and like, well, they're responsible. Well, but what message are we sending? We're sending a message that this is an important part of the heritage. I mean, yes, people are bombarded with all kinds of messages. I hate the fact that every time I drive over the Cooley Bridge, there's a huge billboard for alcohol. Welcome to Hadley, have a beer. Like, that's not the message Hadley wants to send either. But I'm not gonna blame that for the fact that students act like lunatics. So, and the vast majority don't. But the few that do, we can't just say, oh, well, consider the message. That Red Bull truck's driving down the street. Well, you know, that's just the way it's gonna be. We, we are better than that, and I know the Campus Community Coalition's work is better than that. And so I really, really don't wanna send up a letter like that because that's not respectful of the really hard work you guys have been doing associated with this. So thank you.
Thank you for acknowledging that. Those, those messages, I mean, that's the kind of thing we deal with at Campus and Community Coalition all the time. And as was addressed at the recent Chamber Breakfast, kind of all of those environmental and cultural influences that go into this that we sort of, we, we excuse and we disregard, but you know what? They're all part of it, and it all just comes to a head when the students are together away from home for the first time, you know, living on their own on campus, and that's where, that's where a lifetime of the environmental messages come into play. But it's also where you need to be setting incredibly strict lines about expectations and consequences. And, and so that's, that's the message that, that really needs to be getting out there even more loudly, even more clearly. Because, yeah, that's critical. Mr. Hayden?
So, I, I, you know, this is all very interesting and very good, and I appreciate the report. I'm going to register a certain level of frustration. I believe that this collaboration is entirely, exists, and is fruitful and everything else. But as far as I can tell, nineteen-hundred-and-ninety-four students have no repercussions at all for having participated at Townhouse. As far as I've heard, we had to demand that they, UMass, provide ambulances. They didn't volunteer that. They didn't say, huh, you know, we have a responsibility here, let's step up and do it. Maybe they did, but that's not what I've heard. I don't, doesn't even sound like any more than two of those two thousand kids are actually gonna have any serious repercussions. I mean, that was the report, and that, that's, that's terribly frustrating on so many levels. It's terribly frustrating that the university police backed up the town, the town police at Townhouse. I'm not exactly sure what that means, that they sit in their police cars and wave as, as, as people are racing back and forth, going to the, and I don't ask for an answer now, I just, just wanted to, to provide rhetoric for the frustration that I'm sure I'm not the only one is feeling it. I'm hopeful that the work with the Coalition, the work with the, the, the UMass administration would be more, they'd be more forthright about it. I mean, I've heard nothing from the dean's office.
Thank you. So all of this feedback is very helpful for myself and Mr. Musanti to be bringing to these conversations. And to the point about discipline, that this was a very well-videoed and well-photographed event. And so the dean's office and the UMass PD are actually going through those pictures and videos, and they're going to seek to hold accountable everybody who was, who was guilty of something, you know.
And yet they still blame the town for it. I mean, I, you know, I need, I think I need more than that if I'm gonna stop being frustrated.
I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna defend any of that. I will say that the university, I believe they misjudged this event, and so I was having a number of conversations with them leading up to the event about who they were gonna send messages to, you know, who, which students were going to receive information about expectations for the weekend. And, and I went on record saying I really opposed the fact that they decided not to send a mass email out to all their students. They, and, and I understand the logic, they were afraid that, that would be advertising the weekend and giving it more attention than it would have otherwise deserved, or would have otherwise had, and I think that was a miscalculation. And so maybe, maybe if they had it to do over again, they would do it differently. But they did, as, as the letter indicated from the beginning, and apparently still afterwards, view it as sort of a twenty-one-plus situation, which was not obviously what it was. You know, the, and, and the, you know, the, the ambulance records and everything confirm that it, by and large, it's the underage kids who have the, have the issues with drinking. Those are the ones who, are the vast majority of the transports that cause the vast majority of the problems. So, and so I think that was a miscalculation, but I can only hope that that would be different in the future. Ms. Hayden?
I'm feeling very, a great deal of catharsis to vent my spleen, and so I allow myself just one other rhetorical question. Is there an institutional memory at all over there? This is not the first year. It's not the first time on this weekend, this very weekend, when a dumpster didn't get burned, or a car got flipped over, a bus stop got torn up. I mean, come on, I, I.
Many challenges. Thank, Ms. Brewer?
On a slightly different note, but still part of the town manager's report. Way back at the beginning, hours ago, when you started your report. You talked about the schedule of response costs, which I'm really excited to hear that we have, but it's still actually ours, even though it's developed by the police chief, right? So we need to see that at some point so we can help let the citizens of town know, yes, this thing exists, yes, it's real money, yes, it matters. We just need that as part of our toolkit.
Yep.
I would just add, not to belabor, but you know, the town and the three colleges, including the university, we are very much, I think, genuinely invested in each other's success. We want all of the colleges in town and the university to thrive because when they thrive, the town thrives and vice versa. I believe that the university chancellor is committed to working with the town. And this is very much a work in progress. But he has expressed a commitment to pursue both short-term and long-term, you know, tools to, to make progress on all of these areas that we've touched upon tonight. And it is difficult work, but it's essential work. And, you know, this is a good time for constructive impatience to move some of this stuff forward ASAP.
Really is a, it's an incredibly complicated problem. It's complicated on the town side, and it's complicated on UMass, Amherst College, Hampshire College's side. If this were an easy thing to fix, it would have been fixed a long time ago. So no one is doing things that they think aren't going to work. They're only finding that they're not working enough, and so we're always trying to find new ways to make it work. And so, really, just so that folks know, we're, we're trying a million different ways, and, and we're getting varying results, but we still are working very closely together to try and find better solutions every time. Ms. Stein?
I just wanna add one thing to what Mr. Musanti said. I think it would have been far better if the chancellor would have said something. That would have shown that he really is working on this problem instead of someone who was not as high up in the echelons at UMass. I think it would have been stronger leadership and a little more convincing than that two-paragraph letter that was in the paper, which was an irritant and not, and not an acknowledgement of really how hard people have been working in this town.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hayden?
On one hand, I have to appreciate the, the honesty of the letter. I mean, I think now we know. We might not have otherwise.
All right, anything else on the subject?
And when Aaron's getting cynical, we are in trouble.
Mr. Musanti?
Dare I turn to the town meeting preliminary list of articles?
Forty-nine.
It was a bad, bad scene.
So just very briefly, you know, in the run-up to-
So, just very briefly, uh, uh, you know, in the run-up to select board, reviewing and signing a town meeting warrant for the May sixth town meeting, you're scheduled to sign a warrant at your April eighth meeting, which is your very next scheduled meeting. So, at this time of, of the cycle, we, we have a working list of prospective articles that might be considered at the annual town meeting, and many of them are, are standard articles that occur every year. And I thought, there's a, there's a preliminary list in your packet, I thought I could highlight a few of those. Really, the first, uh, fifteen are pretty much traditional recurring articles, budgetary related mostly. The, uh, item number sixteen is water and sewer debt authorization. That is for the Pine Street work, and you'll have a specific language, uh, for the water and sewer portion of that work that would be authorized, recommended to be authorized at the annual town meeting this May, and so work could proceed this calendar year on that portion of the work. At the very bottom of, of the first page, uh, and onto the top of the second page, there's, uh, we have standard articles every year that allow for the possibility of a motion to be considered, uh, related to the use of reserves, whether it's free cash or, or other reserve fund, which is stabilization fund. There are two items listed under the stabilization fund item. It's really a typo. Uh, those should be under the free cash, uh, article. And, uh, A is social services funding. That would be to, uh, implement my, my recommendation that I made, uh, as part of my annual budget, that if CDBG funding, uh, was cut by as much as half, uh, we would, we would identify up to ninety thousand dollars from reserves to basically level fund, uh, the social service agency, uh, account, uh, from the current year. And the second I wanna mention, uh, listed here is town gown strategic planning. This gets back to what I was saying a moment ago about short-term and long-term planning, and the need for the town and the university to redouble our collective efforts at, uh, working, working together, and, uh, the chancellor, uh, brought forward an idea at a recent meeting, uh, with me to work, uh, together and jointly fund a strategic planning, uh, exercise that would, uh, engage an outside consultant to help, help facilitate this effort. So, that would cover the, uh, a number of things to give, bring some clarity, uh, on, uh, the public safety stressors, if you will, that we talked about, or, uh, housing and other, other issues, and that, how can we work most effectively, uh, town and gown? So, I've expressed, uh, to him my openness of that and, uh, the notion of working together and jointly funding such an effort, so you can expect to see a specific proposal, uh, in the next couple of weeks. Also going down, working down the list that's in the packet, uh, number thirty-one, rental regulations, that's the Safe and Healthy Neighborhood Work Group. My intention is to, uh, uh, take those recommendations and then offer, offer, uh, recommendations to the select board for possible inclusion on the warrant. And then at the very bottom of the list are a series of petition articles, one zoning-related article, and, uh, nine citizen petitions for a variety of things. I know during the month of April, we'll be scheduling time with, with the select board to review each of those.
Thank you. Um, I'll just note, which number is it? Uh, general, number thirty-nine, uh, bylaw nuisance house, select board. I'm not sure if that's gonna happen or not. This is the one we've been talking about for a couple of weeks now, that I was working with a citizen, um, to try and do this. The citizen did put forth their petition, uh, which is number forty-three. I think that they actually left out a part that was important to the select board, and I think they did it inadvertently, and I'm not sure if we're able to fix that at this point, or if it's kinda too late for that, so, um, I haven't been able to give that enough time to kind of work that through yet, but, um, that, that would only be sort of a catch-up to, uh, to deal with what the citizen petition, I believe, has, has overlooked. So, um, we'll see how that goes. Questions or comments about the, the list as it is? Mr. Hayden?
I'm, uh, sort of noticing that there are forty-nine and maybe only forty-eight articles in the end, which reminds me of why Amherst is such a great place to be. It really is very diverse. The, uh, the number of issues that are, are addressed in this are, uh, what I, the exercise that I, I was trying to do with it was to figure out where the consent calendar would be, which ones of these could be lumped together in a consent, 'cause that was something we, we mentioned as, as, um, um, an idea for town meeting, and I really can't find that many. May, maybe the easements, but, um, so there, there are six or seven that we could lump together, but everything else, not even the, um, not even the, um, budget issues can really be clumped together.
I do know, uh, Mr. Pistrang, who's the only person running for the moderator position this year, uh, is thinking, uh, a lot about the consent calendar, so, um, that is something that hasn't been used for a number of years, but he is going to look to pursue that. I'm not sure what he's decided, um, but he's, he's definitely thinking about it, so.
Let's encourage him on that.
Yes, indeed. Ms. Burr?
Do we know yet, um, it's a two-part question, I guess. Do we know yet if town council, who, you know, obviously does lots and lots of things for us, has been able to at least give these enough of an overview that we know these are going forward? It's too soon, isn't it?
The petition articles? They all have to go forward.
Right, they're, they're.
Well, they go forward whether or not.
They've received the, the, uh, minimum number of required citizen, citizen signatures. Um, they are at town council now, and he's actively reviewing those.
I mean, we end up putting them on the warrant, but then we sometimes have to dismiss them because they're just not viable.
Right, so that, that's what his recommendation to us will be.
Right, as to form. We'll have that prior to the eighth of April.
Yeah, but everything will have to, just, I don't want any citizens to think that their stuff might not end up on the warrant. It will, because it has to. Um, whether or not there's a recommendation that is, in fact, viable and, and can go forward, um, we'll know closer to town meeting.
Yes, thank you. I didn't mean to mean that town council was the gatekeeper, 'cause I wouldn't want that to be true either. Um, and the rental housing info bylaw petition, I actually haven't read, but I'm wondering if that reflects, I'm showing my ignorance, but I'm going to go ahead and wonder if that reflects back to the longtime bylaw we have that says how we send out this book about landlord-tenant regulation, 'cause I know that came up associated with early work of safe and healthy neighborhoods. I'm assuming that when a bylaw that currently, my point to bringing this up is that our current bylaw says we pass out this book, we don't pass out this book. So, well, I don't know what this petition article says. We obviously are gonna have a new bylaw that's gonna have information that talks about, which is going to be incredibly useful for people. I guess I would just like, um, town council at some point to mention as an aside to us, when it's a simple thing like that, like we're gonna pass out a book and then we don't do it. I mean, it would be nice to clean up our bylaws and get rid of that, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter. I mean, like, like how to describe to people, like, "Yes, we don't do that anymore. Yes, we haven't gotten around to asking town meeting to take it off the books." But that doesn't mean, like, somebody's in trouble or something. It's just an old thing that hangs there. And I don't know, I mean, it's just one of those things nobody ever gets around to fixing, because we got way too many other things to do.
That's, that's pretty much it, yep. But, yeah, I'll try and, try and find an answer to that.
It doesn't compel, you know, that kind of thing.
All right, anything else on the town meeting warrant article? So, I did send an email to the select board for scheduling purposes, that we had talked about that April sixteenth meeting being just if, if we had to meet, um, at that point, we didn't know what the warrant was gonna look like. Now that we have practically fifty articles, like, it's necessary. There's no way to fit, I mean, this is gonna be essentially, you know, twelve articles per night, roughly. Obviously, it's not exactly how it will work out, but, um, but, um, regrettably, we need to meet all those meets, meetings in April.
An optimist.
All right, Mr. Musanti?
Uh, yes, I wanna, uh, make a couple of staff recognitions. First, Vera West Davis, who has worked for the town for, uh, the past thirty years, including the last twenty-three years in the fire department, as, uh, administrative assistant, uh, in, in the fire chief's office. She's retiring, uh, March twenty-ninth. And I just wanna thank her for her many, many years of dedicated service. Chief Nelson has described her as a, a quote, "constant," who's provided, uh, support to three different fire chiefs, and describes her as, uh, dedicated to the work of Amherst firefighters and the department. And so I wanna wish Vera well in her retirement. Secondly, uh, wanted to tell you in a, in a public setting, uh, I am, uh, have, uh, decided to transfer Debbie Gordon, one of the administrative assistants in my office, uh, to the fire department to fill, uh, the position that was held by, uh, Vera West Davis. Debbie Gordon, uh, provides a lot of, uh, administrative skill, people's skills, uh, and will be a real asset, uh, real critical, uh, part of the fire department team, and I think it's a great opportunity for her. She's excited about it, and, uh, Debbie has been very, very helpful to all of us, uh, and particularly so to me during, uh, a long time ago now, when I was newly appointed, uh, as town manager, we were going through a number of transitions, and, uh, Debbie, Debbie has done great work, and I think she has a long career ahead of her with the town, and wish her well, uh, in the fire department. Uh, the third one, Susan Waite, our, our DPW's solid waste and recycling coordinator, recently received an award in celebration of Women Award from the Amherst League of Women Voters. Uh, it's an award given annually, uh, to mark International Women's Day. It's really related to community service, and Susan was recognized for her excellent work on, uh, things like developing and doing the educational outreach and researching and coming up with a proposal that, uh, passed either unanimously or almost unanimously at the Amherst Town Meeting on the polystyrene ban. A real forward-thinking, uh, environmental initiative. And she's done, and is continuing to do excellent work on, uh, uh, refuse management, uh, committee as we look at, uh, reducing our waste stream, short-term, long-term. And so it's great to see her recognized, uh, by the League of Women Voters.
Could you pause to note, uh, that Debbie Gordon has been such a terrific resource to the select board? She has, as you noted, been the, been the, the constant through the big transition in the town manager's office. Um, she's such a huge help with licensing, with stuff that has to do with committee work. Um, she is just, she's a lovely person, she's a helpful person, and, uh, we'll miss her, but we're very excited for her new opportunity, so.
It's gonna leave a hole.
It will, it will.
I hope we fill it.
Oh, I just wanted to add that, uh, oh, yeah, we're gonna fill that position.
Oh, good.
Which is a perfect.
Yes. Uh, we are, we've begun the recruitment process, and, uh, you know, we're, we're going to try to attract, uh, top-tier candidates, and, uh, I intend to fill ASAP.
Ms. Burr?
Um, again, reiterating everything you said about Debbie's importance, not only daily, but also during the transition that our last town manager has been critical, and I'm thrilled that she's still staying with the town. You know, if, like, if we have to lose her, at least we're losing her to another part of town, so that's excellent. Um, one of the things that's always fascinating, just fascinating, everybody in the world, I want you to know about select board work, is separating the process from the people. And one of the things that is really important to me, based on previous town managers, perhaps versus current town manager, is I think it would be valuable for the select board, which does depend a lot on staff in the select board slash town manager office, to see the job descriptions for Deborah Rousalas, your assistant, and for Debbie, because there's been a number of transitions in the way those positions were laid out through the last transition from the town manager, and I think it's just important for the public to understand, you know, what these people do, and for us to understand, and we all work together marvelously, and I don't think we tax people unnecessarily, et cetera. But because they're under the select board budget to a point, I think it's, it's appropriate for us to know what those job descriptions look like, more so than necessarily for ninety-nine percent of the rest of our wonderful town employees.
No, I'm happy to, happy to share those, uh, with you, and you can imagine that it's a pretty, uh, encompassing.
Yeah, all kinds of stuff.
From, you know, the day-to-day kind of real administrative work to a lot of the constituent services and things like that, that people regularly come to my office and are seeking, uh, action from the select board, et cetera, so.
Thank you. Mr. Hayden?
I just want to, um, add my appreciation of Vera's service. She was the second person that I met when I, um, uh, came to join, uh, the service of, of the town. Uh, Chief Hoyle was the first, but, uh, that was before I was recruited to join the call force, way back when, so. I appreciated her work.
Thirty years with the town, that's pretty impressive. That's wonderful. We wish her well also. Thank you, and congratulations to Susan Waite. All right.
Uh, next, uh, there is a, uh, a, a letter that's on your, a draft letter on your desk, and there's one in the signature folder. Uh, this is related to, uh, notice of intent received by the town from, uh, W.D. Coles, giving the town right of first refusal, uh, on a, uh, three parcels of land off of Henry, uh, Street and, and Flat Hills Road. Uh, that's considered chapter sixty-one, uh, land. Under that state statute, uh, the town, uh, needs to be offered a right of first refusal, refusal, uh, within a hundred and twenty days of receipt. So, there are some issues, technical issues with the, uh, completeness of the notice that has been received and, uh, in consultation with town council. Uh, drafted a letter for the board signature, since the request is to the select board, to go to the, uh, property owner, uh, identifying, uh, issues with the notice, and there'd be, that would give the opportunity for follow-up, uh, so that the hundred and twenty-day, uh, clock is not yet triggered, uh, until that notice is considered complete. Uh, and that letter would, would make, make them aware. And there'd be follow-up with, uh, town staff and with town council and the, and the property owner.
Thank you. So, this, uh, this item wasn't on the agenda, um, as of last week, the, late last week, the thought was that this letter might be able to come from the town manager and didn't involve the select board at all. But, uh, as Mr. Musanti mentioned, town council said that because the notice came to the select board, the select board is supposed to respond with the letter, so, uh, so town council has created the letter for us, and we just need to sign it. Uh, other questions or comments on that, or anything else from Mr. Musanti? Do you have other things you'd like to talk about?
Just really quick, especially in the interest of time, I wanna mention five, very quickly. Recent or upcoming things. Uh, March eleventh, I was, uh, had a great time with a number of you, uh, serving as a, uh, celebrity waiter at the Empty Bowls event over at the pub, uh, in support of the Amherst Survival Center. It was a very successful fundraiser, I'm told, for the Amherst Survival Center, and we had a lot of fun seeing a couple hundred townspeople come out and support. It was a good time. Uh, last week, I also had lunch, uh, lunch meeting with Loomis, uh, community CEO David Scruggs, and App, Applewood's, uh, administrator Rob Claflin, just getting updated on all things Applewood, and so that was very helpful. As a, uh, proud parent, I attended the, uh, Amherst High School Musical this past weekend, Oklahoma, and there were big audiences at both the matinee on Saturday and the evening show, as I, uh, went with various family and friends, uh, to the performances, and, uh, there's over a hundred, there's about a hundred and fifty high school students who, uh, participated in all aspects of putting on that, uh, production, and it just underscored for me, uh, what, uh, a priority that the Amherst, uh, uh, schools and the, uh, high school, uh, place on arts and, uh, performing arts, and John Beck. And John Becktole and other staff over there, just really a very positive and successful program. Just wanted to highlight that. This Thursday, I'll be at an ICMA International City Management Association. They call this the Northeast Regional Summit. I won't be coming back with any peace treaties or anything like that, but it's a great professional development opportunity and another chance to see colleagues from all over New England on Thursday. So I'll have a report next time. And then also a plug, this coming Sunday, March 24th, at 2:00, the Friends of the Amherst Senior Center are putting on their fourth annual Amherst Follies Show at Buckley Recital Hall at Amherst College. And it's a big fundraiser for the Friends of the Senior Center. We hope to see you all there.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from Mr. Musanti? All right, moving along then to member reports, JCPC update. Jim Stern?
Break routine, and I'll do it this time. Again, in the interest of time, since I'm trying to summarize at least four hours of two meetings, I won't go through everything. But basically, we're done now here in presentations from the different budget units. And we'll begin deliberations on priorities and actual numbers starting this coming week. On March 7th, we heard from Department of Public Works, Information Technology, and the information technology component of the schools. Basically, DPW's asked about $906,000, which I'm not mistaken, is about, is down from $1.50 last year. $500,000 is for road repair, coming out of Chapter 90, which is state money that we get. So technically, it's not part of the capital budget in the sense it's a different, it's a different funding source, but it's traditionally listed there. So that's part of the reckoning here. And among the $406,000 remaining, a large part of that has to do with heavy equipment that's really in dire need of replacement, snowplows, trucks, road crews, things like that. So that's taking up a lot of it. Smaller pieces, money for the DPW building, sidewalk money, light relamping and things like that, so. But those are the big-ticket items. And there may be some flexibilities, I understand it with Chapter 90, depending how these things work. So sometimes they're broken down in, in ways that allow us some kind of leeway, depending how things break down. Figured, do we speak, I mean, the budget, not the, not the trucks? The trucks are broken already, a lot of them. Possibilities also from tree removal work there for safety issues, equipment that has to keep limbs that might fall on buildings and power lines, things like that. So that's the, pretty much the picture there. Town IT coming off a very successful year, Mr. Pakounis says. In fact, our most successful. The town has been pretty good about funding requests. And basically, what IT has been trying to do is to streamline and make things more efficient in the sense of, for example, consolidating to fewer large units of equipment while remaining, maintaining the same service levels. So for example, getting rid of lots of little personal copiers and printers and things like that, and putting in big ones. That means they cost more, and each one is more crucial, but it works out better for the whole. Another big project there, the total we're talking about here is $346,000. You know, $123,000 for infrastructure replacements, computer units. Big task, $70,000 to digitize documents. They're now stored in the basement of Town Hall. Some of those we need to do for preservation, some for regular access, but that also frees up space. So for example, if we get those documents digitized, we can take the voting machines out of this wonderful space here and put them down there. And the documents will then be stored in North Amherst School Basement where the Survival Center used to be. So there's a lot of, trying to make more efficient use of space and things like that, too. Other expenses include some Wi-Fi upgrades, munis modules, the software that runs the town, helps us keep track of inventory fleet and job applications. Interesting thing, repeated from last year, which was not granted at the time, is $33,000 for a hybrid vehicle. I think people don't realize that we have a huge, a large fleet of vehicle, over 100, 120-something? Or 123? I forget. There's no dedicated vehicle for IT. And yet, we have multiple buildings that have to be serviced, the Town Hall, the schools, the library, and so forth. People have to use their private vehicles for that. So we're asking for a hybrid, or I should say, IT is asking for a hybrid, JCPC hasn't determined. And it might be funded under green communities, so there's a good chance to save some money there, or to get some money even, as part of our green fleet incentives. Again, copiers, plotter scanner for the big maps we produce for planning, things like that, no surprises. Schools have a lot of money in $26,000 for copy replacements. Again, one for each business unit, trying to centralize there. But $190,000 for computing equipment. Schools are moving more towards smaller and portable devices, in part because the way we use computers is changing. But also, for example, we're getting rid of the paper MCAS. But we don't have a single lab where we can put 80 or 100 computers, and the students have to take a test in the same proctored space. So laptops and iPads, tablets, things like that, make that more, more flexible also. School facilities, we've got $671,000. Different kinds of priorities. So for example, there's only $5,000 for a special ed van, but that's the highest priority in a practical sense, because as Mr. Pohanowit says, the kids have to get to school. On the other hand, a different high priority, actually marked very high, which is unusual, is $150,000 for security, partly in light of Newtown and things like that. They're very, and you heard about this also with regard to the Wildwood, you know, places with open floor plans. Very technical things, how doors can be locked or not locked, what kind of access can be shut off to a floor or a section, and so forth. So that's vital. I know Mr. Musanti worked on that this past fall. You heard about generators and so forth for the schools. Miscellaneous things like that, not, sorry, you heard about boiler replacement. Generators also, which are partly a safety issue. They were there for backup and for emergency use. So those are essential kind of things. Town facilities, about $190,000. Miscellaneous things, Town Hall, Bang Center, North Amherst, North Amherst former school to rehab the basement to make it a document storage area, safety, the Munson Library steps, things like that. So that's pretty much where we are. You know, they all, they all sound important, but each group is asked to prioritize. And we're gonna sort through and try to make, what, $275,000 in adjustments between now and the time we get to Town Meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Stein, did you want to add anything?
The only thing, I think I didn't hear Jim say, and he talks fast, so I don't always catch it.
I looked on the clocks, though, yeah.
No, it was good. There was a possibility that the car for IT might be electric. That this was an interesting option that Mr. Poole suggested we explore. And so I thought that was different.
Right. Something high, high energy efficiency that would fit the green community.
Right. But still, green community is eligible. Right.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the JCPC report, Ms. Burr?
I actually want to drag the town manager back into this and see if he wanted to give a two-sentence synopsis of the really great explanation he gave to a member who was formerly Select Board member, who was here earlier, but a DAAC member now, who was asking us about, you know, when we do things at the Capitol, at the Capitol Planning Table, do we think about all the other things we're trying to do in town as well? And I know that's come up before, associated with historic preservation, for example. Are we effectively comparing what might be funded under CPAC, what might be funded under JCPC? And he was bringing in, you know, are we really, are we looking at our transition plan associated with disability access? And the town manager had a really good answer for that. So I'm putting him on the spot now, just to say briefly that the answer is yes. We are trying to make sure we are staying aware of all of these things while we're doing this. It isn't that people are just looking in a very narrow, or, you know, we're just talking about copiers and pieces of equipment. We're looking at bigger issues as well.
Yeah, the answer is yes, but it can be better and made more clear to all of the staff. And so one of the suggestions I've made to Finance Director Sandy Poole, as we, you know, continuously try to tweak how we review projects, is to look at that project request worksheet that we developed a number of years ago, that for every single project, there's a list of criteria. And there's a section on there that talks about what are the objectives that are achieved in individual requests, could be anything from, you know, safety, or energy efficiency, or, you know, various things. But having one that's explicit, right on that checkbox about, you know, furtherance of the disabilities access plan. And having, so that can be more easily flagged at the staff level, my level, and at the JCPC level.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on JCPC? Then other liaison reports. Ms. Stein?
Well, the Select Board Office got a call today from Senator Stan Rosenberg and the state. They are interested in our flag, and they wanted to know when it would be ready. Because they are actually trying to finish up having one flag from every town or municipality, I should say, in the state. And obviously, we are one of the last half dozen, or maybe we are now the last. However, I am happy to report that I should be able to pick up the flags on March 29th. And therefore, we should plan to have a formal presentation from the Rotary at the April 8th meeting, so that they can present the flag that they have purchased for the State House to the town. And then we can make arrangements for having it hung at the State House. So I thought that was pretty exciting, since we now actually have a pickup date. Okay, other than that, this is the week that the Japanese Middle School students and the Japanese contingent come to visit. And they will be here starting, I think it's Thursday. So that's Kanakasaki Sister City Committee has been working hard on planning the agenda for when they are here. I did not get to, well, I got to the Community Reading Together Event, which was the secret life, the brief, wondrous life of Oscar Wow. And Juno Diaz, the Pulitzer Prize-winning author, spoke on March 11th. And the auditorium, the Amherst Regional Middle School Auditorium was full. And people were extremely interested. And he was, well, he used very colorful language, but he was very, I think, impressed with the nature of the questions that our Amherst audience provided for him. It was very delightful. And then the Community Preservation Act Committee met on March 14th and did the best they could with the limited amount of money that they had for all the projects. I think what they came up with is, is pretty good. The Historical Society is getting the $21,000-plus that they asked for for preserving the artifacts well, including Emily Dickinson's dress. Amherst Media is getting $54,000 almost for preserving the historical records, recordings that, that they have of the town. The Tiffany Window will be restored and put back in the Unitarian search for the enjoyment of the town for $106,000. This is, of course, assuming that Town Meeting approves the Community Preservation Act Committee's recommendations. $14,000 will go for the Jones Library Roof Repair. The Brunel Phase 1 property will cost $156,000. Okay, then there's, I'm missing, I have an abbreviation, and unfortunately, I don't, I'm gonna have to think for a minute what that's for. But $125,000 will be the Community Preservation Act Committee support for purchasing the Rock Farm, which is the five acres in South Amherst that almost got to be the site of 17 condos. And instead, five acres will be preserved. They had to work very hard to be able to come up with basically half a million dollars. And this is the CPA's contribution towards that. The Department of...
DCR?
DCR, thanks. Is contributing $100,000 towards it, because they did believe that preserving the vistas next to the rail trail was worth doing. And then, this year, we're not going to, they're not recommending funding for the North Common. They think that could wait another year to be further developed. The master plan for the community field, which everybody agrees it's needed, but that, too, they didn't feel they had the money for. And $80,000 for Habitat, the house that would have been the one on Strong Street that we purchased, the Hawthorne House. They didn't get the release on restoring, that restoring that would be so expensive, they can't afford to do it, but they don't have permission from the state yet to tear it down and build affordable housing. So Habitat can't move forward on that. So that's, that's a report. What was the thing that they were...
Housing, housing. I'm gonna ask you about it.
Housing authority.
The housing, the Housing Authority. That's not the one I'm thinking of, because it was something that we went from 30 back up to 60,000. MR, what the heck is MR? But the...
Other recreation field repairs.
Thank you. That's a shade thing. That's, well, it isn't just a shade thing, there's a leak.
It's an eventually thing.
And, and there's fencing that needs doing. And so when they decided that they were going to do this, they moved, increased the amount back up to the 60,000 that was requested. The problem with the housing is that after Mr. Jessup studied it very carefully, he's not sure that CPA money can be used for the project that was brought forward, which was for providing repairs to the kitchens, which were in very bad shape. But because those, that housing units, those housing units were not purchased with CPA money, he doesn't think this is legal. So what is happening at the moment is there's a request from Town Council to find out if we can do this. But the feeling was that we were walking on icy...
Thin ice.
Yeah. It was a little bit insecure, shall we say. So the way they were able to spend all this money is going to be by bonding it, bonding part of these projects. And the only problem with that, everybody was ecstatic with the things we did approve. You could just feel the air lighten when, when the vote went the way it did. The only issue is that every time you take more of the CPA money and put it into bonds, there's less to spend the following year. And so it's kicking the can down the road a little bit, because if there are equally good projects next year, there's, it's, it's hard. But this is a good time to bond in terms of the interest rates. So that's, that's my big, much more lengthy report than I wanted it to be. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from Ms. Stein? Ms. Burr?
I'm sorry, I will just ask Ms. Stein to take back to the committee, the CPA committee, one little person's concern about the Rock Farm project, just in general. I mean, it's fascinating that DCR's decided that's worth preserving. That's certainly not been high on our conservation list of anything to do. And so it was, in fact, at one point, considered a potentially viable place to build housing. Since we don't really seem to want to build housing anywhere in town of any kind, it's kind of irritating to see something else go to conservation. But that's a whole nother, I'm just saying that often when we have these proposals come to Town Meeting, it's so obvious, like, we've been looking for this piece of green space to fit all together, and then this all works so well, and it's this great flow. But sometimes when people hand us money, it's kind of, we wish not to pursue it as well. So an interesting little juxtaposition we have there. I would just ask the town manager to follow up with us later to let us know after this plays out with whether or not the Amherst Housing Authority project can be done with the money, because I'm concerned, because that was supposed to be matching money to block grant money. Block grant money, we may or may not be getting. And it's a huge project. And if we don't get the block grant money, or we don't, and we certainly aren't gonna get enough block grant money to do all of it without the CPA money, then are we, do we consider using joint capital planning? We have to do something. They just don't get anywhere near enough maintenance money from the various other sources, and they apply for grants and yada, yada. But I mean, when cabinets are falling off the wall and you don't have ground fault circuit interruptors, you kind of need to do these things at some point.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm just wondering, you know, where, who, whose, whose lap does it fall into next? You know, after all these other attempts have been made to fund it? So that we won't, we can't just say, oh, well, and, and just not do it.
Okay.
What will be the next step?
It's getting late, so let's try and move along. Thank you. Other questions or comments from Ms. Stein? All right, next reports. Ms. Burr?
It's been really awesome. I haven't gone to a bunch of meetings, because all my life is now focused on the regionalization of elementary schools. And I, I really don't want to talk about it, so. want to talk about it. So let's just move on.
You do have one big report you got to give us on that for those who have not heard of it.
Except we're having a meeting on Wednesday, and things may change. So, yeah. So we, we were all leading up to this vote on March 9th, where we were going to decide what was going to be the thing we were going to continue to work on, or were we going to continue to work on anything? Were we going to just say, oh, done with this, walk away? Were we going to look at a pre-K to 12 system? Were we going to look at keeping the seven to 12 system while changing its school committee composition and adding on a pre-K to six? And lo and behold, it was determined at that meeting that the only progress we seemed to be able to make was to have a three-town K to six with Leverett, Pelham, and Amherst. Shute's Berry representatives indicating although they personally may have been very supportive of the process, they did not feel the town was quite ready to be there yet. This was, of course, very frustrating for many people at the table, but that seemed to be where we ended up after four hours with a half hour break in there at some point. Since that happened, there has apparently been another subcommittee, another meeting of, because, you know, where all these four towns, which each have three-member boards, and their three-member board got together since then and is rethinking their position and wondering if something has changed sufficient in their town that they could consider asking for reconsideration on, at our next meeting, our very next meeting, which is Wednesday. We would have met sooner had we had the opportunity. But, you know, there's, it's kind of hard to get 12 people together in the same place. We worked really hard to have all of us there on the 9th. Not all of us can be there on Wednesday, the 20th. So, similar to old arguments we've had in the past at town meeting, you know, different set of peoples here tonight, you know, when do you reconsider? When do you make these kinds of decisions? So it's super complicated, and it's super frustrating, and I have no idea what's going to happen. So, yeah, so we thought we were going to be moving forward with the three elementary schools working together, but now we don't know what's going to happen. But we know we'll be doing something. So, yeah, there's that.
Thank you for dealing with all of that.
You're welcome.
That's, that's been an amazing process.
It's hard.
Questions or comments from Ms. Brewer? All right, anything else from Ms. Brewer?
No, that's, that'll do.
This side of the table, anyone?
I'm done.
You're done? Mr. Walt?
Uh, let's see. I was going to add to the CPAC, but it's late, so I won't. Historical Commission took up the question of the rezoning of Main Street lots, which are your Article 40 on the warrant. You know, this is lots at the corner of Gray Street and Main Street that we had touted, proposed to purchase with CPA funds before and didn't work out. The new proposal by Mr. Gadera, the owner, is to rezone them from general residential to neighborhood business. What he's going to do is, that would allow him to build more densely. So basically, he'd build on one of the lots, the corner lot, rather than both of them, and we create a building there that could house Amherst Media ACTV. So that's what's going there. Historical Commission seems sympathetic to the general intention, in part because it leaves the one other lot open, but they don't take a position, and that'll take place next month. 28th, the Zoning Board of Appeals will take up the Historical Commission's response to the request about the 290 Lincoln Barn demolition. And then Design Review Board had interesting things, not just the usual signs, which are always fascinating, and I enjoy very much, but what I call the cash cow. That's not its official name. Mr. Gates, who, you know, is working very closely, who owns the carriage shops, and of course, has been a great patron of the, of the homeless shelter through the Baptist Church, wants to erect there, or to allow, to erect on his property, a large cow sculpture made of recycled metal by local artist Camille Peters, about seven feet high and six feet long. It would have, it'd be receptacle, so people could deposit money inside, or they could have themselves pictured there, and there'll be memorabilia you can purchase. The idea being that counterfeit cow productions is making a film about homelessness in a university town, and the money therefore raised would be a way of calling attention to the plight of the homeless and the, and the poor. And it sounds like a very interesting idea. So there'll be a large metal cow, kids can ride on it, you can have yourself photographed there, it'll be lighted at night, and coming, coming soon to a carriage shop near you.
Fascinating, thank you. Questions or comments from Mr. Walt?
There's a frog in Northampton, there can be a cow in Amherst.
A rabbit's appear, we have to have something down there.
Okay, so for my report, we talked all about safe and healthy. So Campus and Community Coalition, we pretty much covered that too. I will just mention one other thing. I've got a document in the packet. The second element of the document, this is called S U M S Spring Community Activities, is the Walk This Way campaign, which you might have read about in the newspaper also. I told you the Campus and Community Coalition was organizing itself into work groups to deal with very specific problems for the spring. So one of those groups is the, the moving around group, walking around group, trying to deal with kind of the roving bands of, of kids who kind of migrate from place to place looking for some place to be. And they cause a lot of disruption in neighborhoods often. So, so this group is working to get them to particularly the, the very large crowds that are going back to Southwest, to try and get them to take a particular route. And so they're going to be doing that by having a whole bunch of students and other volunteers, and electronic signs from the Amherst Police Department, just trying to direct them. It's not, it, it's not like requiring, you know, there's not going to be, you know, we're not going to, you know, all join arms and prevent somebody from going down Fearing Street or whatever. But, you know, no phalanxes or whatever. But encouraging, you know, to folks to, to take a, a different route. And they've kind of mapped out a route down Phillips Street that would take you through into the UMass parking lot that comes out at the end of Nutting Street, that actually, that's the back of the parking lot. It fronts on Mass Ave, but you'd be kind of going through that, that back part. They'll have the Baby Burke UMass food truck there to kind of entice. And so it would be kind of taking a less disruptive route to, to Southwest. There, we're looking for volunteers to assist in this effort. This is 10:30 PM to 2:30 AM on three nights. I will be there on both the Saturday nights, April 13th and April 20th. I'm skipping the Friday, April 5th one because, you know, we've got that Stan Rosenberg's municipal conference first thing Saturday morning. I thought, I don't want to be up until 2:30 and then go to that at 8. But anyway, I strongly encourage you or anybody that you know, especially town folks, I think it's a, it's a good thing to get involved with if you can stand it. I mean, this is not for everybody, I recognize that. But, but if you would be willing to do that, then let me know. And I, I think it'll be fun, and I think, I think it's a, it's a nice way to, to show real responsiveness to neighborhood concerns over there. As you probably read in the paper, they're actually looking, this will be something of a test, to see if maybe this could be a route more for the future, that would be more permanent, that maybe would be marked as sort of a, they called it the Minuteman Trail. So they're, they're just completely brainstorming at this point, but, but really thinking about what could be long-term solutions. So we'll see how that goes. So anybody wants to take part, you just let me know. The other thing that's on that list that's not actually related to Campus and Community Coalition, but it is student stuff related to spring, this actually came out of a meeting that Mr. Musanti and I had with the Greek representatives from the Greek community a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago. And Olivia Pidgenowski, President of the Pan-Hellenic Council, emailed me to, to update us on what they're doing. So what the Pan-Hellenic Council, which is the sorority council, and the interfraternity council have done, is organize a neighborhood cleanup that's going to start on Easter Sunday, actually, March 31st, and then be every other Sunday in April. And I've outlined on here the roads that they will cover. So they're basically going to clean all of the litter off the streets and sidewalks on Phillips, Nutting, Lincoln, North Pleasant from Mass Ave all the way to Amity Street, I mean, that's all the way downtown. Fearing Street from North Pleasant to Sunset, and the residential side of Sunset Ave. All of the different chapters have been assigned, different quadrants of those places to clean up. And, and again, so, you know, we, we talk about kind of the, the negative impacts that too few of the students make, considering how we generalize about them. It's really such a, such a small, a small subset. But it's vast, majorities of the students don't cause any problems at all, and more than that, are looking to find solutions. So the Greek community was really interested in trying to give back in a way that would be meaningful to the community. So we talked about kind of the whole litter concept, and they really liked that a lot. They completely seized that and will run with it. And, and I think that they, they should really be praised for that great effort, and much appreciated. And, and we'll see how that goes. So, so thanks very much to Olivia Pidgenowski from the Pan-Hell Council, and, and all the folks in the Greek system for what they're going to be doing those weekends. That should be tremendous. And I think that's all I have to report on liaison stuff. Open meeting law update, I hope we don't have any.
Yeah, whatevs. There's, there's a thing in here, you can go to it if you want. She actually also issued some additional information associated with Sunshine Week, which usually there's a big write-up about in the newspaper. I'll see if there's anything of interest and let you know.
Thank you very much.
Feel free.
Chair's report, Chair's report, I have bad news, sorry. So last time I told you about advocacy letter, you said, yes, yes, write it, that'd be great. Yeah, that really hasn't happened yet. I apologize. So it's supposed to be two letters. It's supposed to be like, one to our legislators and one to the public. And Mr. Musanti and I were going to work on communication points and everything. It just, that has not been that kind of a couple of weeks for that to happen. But, but we think it's not too late. We're still going to do it, and, and we're really sorry. And if somebody would rather do it instead of us, then you could speak up also. But the goal
Feel free.
The goal is to do it. And so I do apologize for that not having been done yet. So, anyway, that's where it is. Ms. Stein?
As a good little select board member, I called every single one of those people and left a message.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. All right. So that's all my stuff. Do we have other things?
Yes.
Yes, we still have more licenses to deal with.
I can make motions.
All right. So we are working with different versions of the motion sheet. So let's just, before you start reading them, just say what they are, and we'll make sure that
Okay, well, we have a special liquor license for the senior pub night.
Okay.
We have two at least at UMass.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, so why don't I do those two?
Yep.
I move that the Select Board approve a special wine and malt license for a cash bar for the senior pub night at the Amherst College Keith Campus Center, Thursday, March 28th, 2013, from 6:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Charles Thompson, Manager.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I move that the Select Board approve a special liquor license, no, I'm sorry. I move that the Select Board approve special liquor license applications for the University of Massachusetts for receptions to be held on the following events, dates, and times. Judy Bardwell Clerk, Top of the Campus Incorporated. Wine and malt, April 20th, 2013, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Fine Arts Center Atrium, UMass Amherst. All alcohol, April 27th, 2013, 6:00 PM to 12:00 PM, Recreation Center, UMass Amherst.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and I have two taxi licenses. I move that the Select Board approve a new taxi driver license application for Peter Beldon on behalf of Ambassador Taxi Company for the calendar year 2013.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I move that the Select Board approve a new taxi driver license application for Russell A. Russo on behalf of Aaron's Transportation for the calendar year 2013.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And then I have minutes, which I have read. Shall I go ahead and approve them?
Are folks ready to approve the minutes tonight? We've got two sets of minutes?
Yeah.
Yes, no, minutes? Can we go, can we approve them?
Yes, let's prove them.
Okay, Ms. Stein?
I move that the Select Board approve the minutes of February 11, 2013, and February 25th, 2013, as amended, because I have some amendments.
Uh, Mr. Hayden?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And that's all I had.
As amended or as?
Amended, yes.
Amended.
As amended. And here, you can have the amendments.
And Mr. Musanti also has a
Yeah, in your packet, you have a citizen activity form from Robert Brooks, an applicant for the Conservation Commission. And I would ask the Select Board to move to confirm my appointment of him to the Conservation Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Further discussion? Oh, Mr. Hayden?
Has he been on the commission before? I'm trying to remember.
No, he's a retired US Forest Service, excellent credentials. Back in the 80s, he was a chair in the Green, on the Greenfield Conscom.
Okay, or maybe
He's, he's got a background, a good
Yeah, he's, he's very impressive.
Yeah.
All right, that was moved and seconded, right? Further discussion?
Yes, and discussed.
And discussed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay, so we have covered every motion on the motion sheet that we need to cover, correct?
Correct.
We do not meet again until the 8th of April, which is the night before the annual town election. Time we don't usually meet, but we did agree to meet. Just note, we do have a liquor license hearing that night, as is mentioned on the calendar preview. That's for Hickory Ridge Golf Course. Ms. Stein mentioned the, adding the flag thing to that meeting, so we will do that.
I'll notify the Rotary.
And I think that's all. Does anybody have anything else that needs to be said before we go to Mr. Hayden? Then, Mr. Hayden?
We now move to adjourn.
And without objection, this meeting is adjourned at 9:55. Thank you very much.